Whenever you're ready to start here.
All right. Welcome, everyone, to the August. So we had a request from the comment just to remind everyone that in light of recent events, but Delta variant, if you wouldn't mind wearing a mask when indoors, we would appreciate it just for the safety of ourselves and of the public. This is the August 18th meeting of the planning commission. First, we'll start off by taking roll call Barbara Hickby. Suzanne Spellin.
Here.
Sarah Wengert.
Here.
Roddy Yagan.
Here.
And Anthony Moen. Here. Our first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the July 21st and July 26th special meetings. These minutes were distributed to the commissioners and have been posted online as well for the public review. So if we have a motion to approve the minutes or adopt the minutes, I guess.
Is it even on?
Oh. It's on. I think I just need to speak a little bit more directly into the mic. Is this better?
I'll make a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from last meetings.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. The minutes are approved. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. The first item is, first known only item, I should say, is PLPC 2021 10. The project known as the Winter Garden. And my understanding is that the applicant does not intend to pursue the project this time. Is that right, Aaron?
I don't think it's so much the applicant doesn't want to pursue the project so much as we don't have any new information. We had been tabling this proposal the last few months, waiting for some new information. And I just don't know if tabling it an additional month is enough time, or if it's two months, three months. So I think it's just better at this point that we table indefinitely and we renotice the project when additional materials been provided.
Right. So instead of just tabling to a date, certainly, we just table indefinitely. And then whenever the applicant provides new information, right, they can notice it for the next meeting. All right. So if we have a motion to table.
I'll make a motion to table indefinitely.
Second.
All right, going to a vote. Barbara Hickby.
Yes.
Suzanne Spellin.
Yes.
Sarah Wengert.
Yes.
Roddy Yagan.
Yes.
And myself, I vote yes. Motion carries 5-0. So that item is tabled until such times the applicant submits new information.
Correct. And that will require renoticing of all neighbors and all that good stuff.
Okay. Moving on to old business. The first normally item on this part of the agenda is PLPC 2021 14. That's the King's Landing 2 proposal. This was the topic of the special meeting back on July 26th. So I see we have.
And I will recuse myself.
Yes. Thank you, Barbara. So I see we have the applicant here. Can you just test your mic? Make sure that is working. I can be the first person to speak tonight.
There's a switch on the bottom. Yeah.
Perfect.
Good.
As it looks like you have a presentation prepared?
Yes, we do. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning commission and staff. So tonight, we're going through. We'll go through our application. I know we submitted to over two weeks ago, a full application, a full submission with all the items that we want to submit for this project. And then some. So tonight, we're going to go through the app, the project. I have my entire team here. Next slide, please. Just go with the next slide and then we'll go back. So myself, Cosmo Marfione with the BDC Group, President of the BDC Group. I represent the sponsor on this project. I have John Lapper, who from Bartlett, Pontiff, Stewart and Rhodes, who's the project attorney. I have George Olson from Olson Associates, who's the project architect. Claudia Olson cannot be here, but George is here in our place, talking about the preservation of the existing buildings and what we've done. We have Nick Costa from Advanced Engineering, Project Civil Engineer. One new addition to the team, Alana Moran from VHB. Not an older, not a new addition, but new to the planning board meeting, who's done a traffic analysis, a traffic and parking analysis for us. David Smith, the new face, but again, from the beginning, being part of this team. He's our project planner, who's essentially a third party, but is shares office with us and is part of our advisory board and team. And he'll talk about the economic impact and conformity to the Troy Comprehension Plan. And then we also have Stephen Oberon from Columbia Heritage, who did the archaeology, archaeology study, Phase 1A for this project. Go back one. So again, project highlights, Nick, we'll talk about that. George, we're going to go over architectural view corridor study. We're going to go over briefly the historic property condition assessment report. Alana is going to go through her findings and the traffic and parking analysis. David Smith will go through the economic impact analysis and compliance with the City of Troy Comp Plan. I will come back up and talk to you, summarize benefits. And then John Lapper will conclude the presentation and talk about the call to action for the board. I just want to tell the board that this, this project is not something that we just designed and presented. We started this process with the previous application, but even before that, we started the process in October of 2019, where we met at the Baptist Church on Fifth Ave with the neighbors at least three, at least three times. And even before it became an official application. This project, our firm, is taken very seriously. We've put a lot of time and effort, and as you can see with my project team here, who I just wanted them to be here tonight and be available to you for any questions and you could get it from the professionals' mouth. Again, this is something that we're not taking lightly. We put a lot of time and effort and we do thank you in advance. We're going to try to go through this presentation quickly, but we're going to give it the respect, the needs and the time and needs so that we could move to the next step. Thank you. Good evening. Nick Casa from Advanced Engineering and Survey. And we're here tonight to present this King's Landing 2 on behalf of the BDC Group. We've worked with Cosmo on developing, redeveloping the site. This is a site that's located in the northeast corner of New Federal Street and Fifth Avenue. It's about half an acre in size, a little more than half an acre. It is located on the, in the B4 Central Commercial Zoning District. And the proposal is to develop this, redevelop the site with 62 residential apartment units. There will be two levels within the building. There'll be two levels of parking and which will provide 62 indoor parking spaces, basically one for every one of the residential units. The zoning district does not require any parking to be provided. There's also, I believe, six outdoor parking spaces that will be built as part of this project. And then there's 15, about approximately 1500 square feet of retail slash restaurant that will be located on the first floor. And this, the additional development from this project is there's going to be a new parking lot at Jacob and Fifth, which will also provide 38 new parking spots for the community. And with the redevelopment of New Federal Street with the sidewalk, there will also be six more parking spots on New Federal Street that will be developed with this, with this project. All the, this is the aerial view of the, of the site. It's at this quadrant of the intersection of New Federal and Fifth. And this is the parking lot located at Jacob Street. All the infrastructure that's necessary to provide the site with municipal service is existing. There's existing water system. There's, there's existing water along New Federal Street. There's existing water along Fifth Ave. There's also existing sanitary sewer along Fifth Avenue. There's existing storm sewer system to manage the stormwater runoff. The main entrance is located at this corner. That's the main entrance to the building with the elevators located here. And then the parking will be accessed through a new entrance at this location of the north, northly side of the building. And also the, the lower level parking will be accessed from a new access point located right here. So this is a redevelopment. It, it's right adjacent to King's Landing 1, which is this building right here. And it will be the redevelopment of the, of this corner of Federal and Fifth Avenue. So if there are any questions, I'd ask for us to finish up the presentation and then I can, I can certainly try to respond to any questions that the board may have. Thank you.
Good evening. Can I pull this down a little? George Olson from Olson Associate Architects, and we are the architect for the project. I think we'll start, I'll run through relatively quickly since you've seen this a couple of times before. And I want to point out some of the, I think, Cosmo originally, we talked about what the inspiration was and it's more the context and where we got to here. And then I'll talk a little bit about the previous application, the five-story building and six-story or five-story that we had originally. And then I'll run through the renderings and plans and the elevations. And if you want to stop me as I'm going, that's fine. We originally, I think we showed this when we had a number of discussions about townhouses and whether they were ornate or not ornate, and whether they were all different or whether they were similar. So we had this, this slide we had shown, and I think we had on a number of, on the last couple of occasions talked about. And you'll see when we get to the townhouse portion of the building, we talked about proportion and the two-story versus adding a third story. So we, I think we've addressed those, tried to address those issues and hope you'll agree. Next. This was, actually, you can skip that. This was another slide that I think we introduced the last time where we talked about the portions of the building. The buildings have a base, a cap and a middle, I guess classically you would say that. And our building has a base, a cap and a middle. There was some comments that buildings should have a heavy masonry base. And our building does not have a heavy masonry base. Our building is more glass, more open, letting the retail and the activity of that first floor spill out into the grass area and sidewalk area of the building. And if I can figure out how to work this, you can see that that is not an uncommon historic character or feature. A lot of them have columns coming down, but in between those columns, obviously non-bearing, you'll have a lot of glass and the retail again is spilling out and becoming part of the sidewalk. Next. This was a, an aerial photograph that we had done, and I can actually see some of the heights this time. Our building is 82 feet. And you can see that within a block or a block or two of our building, you've got 69 feet, 71 feet, 63 feet. The building directly across the street is 92 feet. And obviously with the tower over there at 183 feet is, that's not typical, but it is in the neighborhood. So contextually, moving the building, again, I think that was a good recommendation by the board. Taking that bulk, moving it toward Federal Street certainly makes it more contextual. It's the main street where the larger buildings should be, the taller buildings should be. And then again, as we've said before, we scale the building down as it goes down Fifth Avenue. This was just something that we, the outline in red was our original proposal of five stories. It went from Federal Street all the way over to the edge of the property line and was five stories. And it did step down at a portion, but it basically maintained that five-story mass the whole way. And you can see what it did on Federal Street. And superimposed over that, you can see what the new building does, although it's larger on Federal Street, it's greatly reduced along Fifth Avenue, which is the residential street. And you can see the difference in what we had before. And I'll point it out again later, but we did, I think at our last submission or our previous second submission after the five-story one, we had an eight-story building with a two-story townhouse portion. And there was some, like, good recommendation that the scale and proportion wasn't really in keeping with the townhouses along the street or in Troy in general. And to take a look at maybe going to three stories and stepping down to seven. And that's what we've done in this presentation. Next. These are a series of renderings that we have. We had, I think you'll, you'll see on here, we had a more of a mixture of materials before. We've simplified the materials. We've simplified the colors. We've actually simplified these bands, which act as the enclosure for terraces that we have. Each of the units, almost every unit has a terrace. And as you go down Fifth Avenue, you'll see there's front porches. And then this is our elevator and lobby. So you can stand there, the glass and look out. And again, as I said, our retail along the first floor and our lobby along the first floor. Next. Just smaller from the street level view. And one thing I did want to point out that I've pointed out before is essentially where that seven-story portion of the building ends is where the buildings across the street begin. So the seven-story portion of the building really is only on Federal Street. It does not impact the buildings across the street. It is basically or entirely across the street from the parking lot. And then we marched down Fifth Avenue with a three-story townhouse portion. There is the three-story townhouse portion. I think we had had a number of different roof lines here, and I think we had had some different levels of window articulation. We've simplified that in this version. We've simplified the roof lines a little bit. We had a couple of different porch features here where we have our outdoor steps and porch. And then what's now rendered here is a grass area out in front. And we've gone to all porches, which have a base along the water table, which is pretty evident here, which is borrowed from most of the townhouses around. And then we've opened up the railings on the porches. There'll be wrought iron railings and more open and more transparent. And as we discussed before, we've pulled out some Oriole windows, more modern, more streamlined, but echoing the types of things you'd see. And again, this shows raising those proportions up was much, I think that was a much better suggestion than in our squad or two-story townhouses. Next. This is a view from the north portion of Fifth Avenue and basically from the church. One thing I didn't emphasize, but you saw in that red, the old scheme that was in, outlined in red, we pushed the building back about 20 feet. So there's a grass strip there and an area to access the parking garage. So the building is moved away from the church and it is now three and a half stories instead of what was five stories at one time. And we had played with different features on there. And it was, I think somebody set a blank wall with a green wall below it. Now it is much more in keeping with, although it is still the side of the building, like any side of any townhouses, it's brick, it has more windows in it. And again, it's been pushed back 20 feet from the face of the church's garden. Another view from Federal Street. This is King's Landing 1. That actually, if you carry that across, hits about there. But it's set back, so it looks like it's a little bit shorter, but it's a five-story building and our building is seven stories. And if you look at the lower level retail, I think what was, what you'll see it in the plan, but I think doesn't show well in any of the three-dimensional views is that building actually can a levers out. So we actually have an arcade or a little colonade and there's columns that come down to support that. We did some night views, so you could get an idea of how that retail and that lobby and entrance spills out onto the street. And also, I think there were some questions about what this glass wall was. And basically, this will be pretty much lit and it won't be, the building isn't lit from the outside with glaring lights up because it's a residential building. Thought we did want to give the building some evening character and again, let that interior come out. And you can see as we go down along here, you'll only have some porch lighting and window lighting, and we do have some lighting at each of the balconies, which would be the residences' living rooms. There's another view along Federal Street. A view along Fifth Avenue. And I know these are a little, we've included them in your packet, so you could up close read the materials and things. Again, like I said, the building is brick. It's one color brick now, although we do have different detail and pattern in there. So we eliminated the two different color bricks, which I think some people said that it was pushing a little bit, trying to make it something that it wasn't. We still have the fiber cement board up here on top, but we've added a lot more brick than what we originally had. And again, the glass curtain wall on the corner. And again, that curtain wall, this portion of the building comes out. So that's not meant to light up along Fifth Avenue. That's really not seen by the residences, which would start about here. So that's really on the corner and it becomes more of a Federal Street, the main commercial, more of a commercial street character. Another closer view, that view that I just showed you had the street in it. This is just one of the views that we, or the plans that we presented to you, showing all, outlining all the materials. And again, on Federal Street, the same. And you could see here with the shadow, these are the colonade that comes down underneath these bays that pop out. And we actually, you can actually walk underneath that. It's about four, four and a half feet. And the glass is set behind that. The west elevation, we have a corner feature here as you come over the bridge with some more glass and different material, and then the brick wraps around. And as it steps back, we could take advantage of some, it's the gray color, but it's a different material on that lower scale. It's the fiber cement board. And again, like I said, this is the north elevation along the church. The fence there and then the building, and you would actually come up underneath here and go into the building to go to the parking. And we did, I didn't mention that, but I, it was pretty evident. We did step the building up a half a flight to give those residential porches, just like what's across the street. Most of those are up off the ground, a half a floor. So. This was a study we did showing the context, basically mass and scale of the streets. This is the building, our building and the portion of Fifth Avenue. Just showing the straight-on elevation looking west. Underneath that is our building and the portion of Fifth Avenue showing in blue is a silhouette of what's across the street. So you can see that even going up to the third story, we, some of the buildings across the street are about the same height. And actually, a couple of them are actually a little bit taller than that portion. And you can't see it right there, but right about there is where that blue begins. So the seven-story portion of the building is not opposite any of the townhouse or any of the brownstones or row houses across the street. And we did the same thing as you go up Federal Street. We kind of went out there and mapped this and using Google Earth. There's our building. These are the buildings, again, set back on Fifth Avenue. That's that residential block and then obviously the tower. And the buildings in blue are the buildings across the street from our building. So they on the south side of Federal Street. I think somebody commented that the plans were very small in the last presentation. So we just blew these up and I think Nick covered the levels of parking here. Next. What this slide shows is the porches and things which we did not have. The original presentation, I think the building came out almost to our property line. You can see in this one, it's set back, so it allows us to get these front porches, stairwells, stairways, access to that half a flight up. And what you'll do, somebody also had a question of how do you get to the unit? This bill, this section of the building, the retail and lobby is at grade, handicapped accessible. You'll come in, the elevator will go up. It's a half a flight up. And then you can come in and you'll see on the next slide and that you'll take that up a half a flight and you'll be in the residential. Only, and these units have the front doors out to the street. These are just floors two and three. Because we do have floors two and three here, and then this portion is the taller portion.
George, would you go back to the, just go to the last slide?
That one?
Yeah. Thank you. So the lit corner on Federal and Fifth is not a stair, but an elevator lobby?
Yes.
That's its only function, correct?
Its function is elevator lobby and just like we have, it's in some places on Phase 1, it's a little spot. There'll be a bench there for people to sit, wait for the elevator. Sit there on the bench. If you want to read a book, look out. It's an opportunity to get out of the corridor, grab that light and look out and also to let natural light into it.
Will you do me a favor? I'm sorry I didn't stop you before.
That's okay.
Floor one, so we can see the pedestrian.
The access.
Exactly. Thank you.
Okay. So here's Federal Street, Fifth Avenue. There's that lobby and it's glass as it turns the corner. And then you would actually, you could either walk up to this level, which is a half a floor up, and then access these back units if you don't go in the front. And then you also would enter the elevator, which was on the last slide there, and it's a half a flight. So you would stop off there for handicapped accessibility. And then we obviously have to have a door to separate the lobby, fire protection, and then you would go in and.
Okay. Sorry. Am I being, so this is a, there's a front and a rear door on this elevator at this level?
Yes. If you go back to, I think it shows in the actual parking level. We call this the first floor, but yes, this, there would be a skip-stop elevator from the first. skip stop elevator from the first floor to halfway up to this, from this lower level where it's a lobby.
Yes.
You'd go in and then you'd up, and then there's a rear door that you would come out here. And then as you would go out, the rest of the floors, there would only be this door that.
Just making sure we really have equal access.
Yes, it's fully accessible. And again, here's, this is the top floor. I call that force floor seven, but it's, that's mislabeled Cosmo. That's one of the upper floors and floor seven, we actually show you an apartment, which is kind of like a little penthouse apartment. Next in. And there was also some concern in uh, King's Landing one, that we had a great number of bedrooms where the living and the living rooms were more dorm type in set. So they weren't, there were no living rooms on the perimeter. So which allowed us to get an extra bedroom in. These units do not have that. This is just a sampling, but it's a pretty typical sampling. There are no three-bedroom units and all of the units with the exception of the one bedroom. All the units have a master bedroom suite. So these are market rate or above market rate. And you could see there's a typical one bedroom. That's a typical two-bedroom. And here's the two-bedroom townhouse, which has the front entrance and the entrance to the corridor in there. And you could see they, again, they all have a master bedroom and a, and a separate contained master bath. Um, these are just two kind of unique units. This is the one that's on the corner that overlooks the bridge. And that's the one that shows the glass on the elevations. And then, uh, this one is what I was just talking about. This is, this is a little penthouse where we stepped back on Fifth Avenue. So that is actually, the building is at six floors there and then the seventh floor portion steps back. So as you turn the corner, it steps back and then it steps down again. And that's just that unit, which has a large terrace outside. So that unit also is not, the terrace is not for the public. So it's not going to be something, you know, where you're going to have a lot of people hanging out there. It's really for that kind of special unit up there. Next.
Is there a roof plan? Or any intended use for the roof space?
No, there's no intended uses for the roofs. And again, all mechanical, it's not going to have a huge chiller or anything. All the mechanical will be, they're all per unit. So same thing on, uh, Kings one will have a small compressor up there. And they'll be grouped in the middle. So your sight lines, you probably, you, I know you won't see them Fifth Avenue because it'll be three and a half stories up and they're only thirty inches tall. So. Now again, we don't have any chillers or any of that kind of stuff. Um, this is the a view corridor study, we call it. We went out and, um, actually Michael walked around and took photos and we superimposed, which you'll see in the aerial views, but you don't see here. That's where you are and that's where you're looking and these are the photographs. So you could see, even if you, if these trees weren't here, our, this, the street turns and our building would be here. And it's pretty well blocked by this residential building. And you can see the bridge in the background. Next. And this is a little bit farther up the street. We were right there before and now we're up here. And again, you could see that building. And if, if, if you remember the slide that I showed before with the blue color, that building is almost exactly the same height as our building at that point, because it's going uphill. Next. And you guys know this area better than I do, but we're up overlooking at the little overlook there. Up by the college and you can't see anything at that point. Um, and then we went farther, I think this, yeah, farther down the street on the other side of the tower and our building would be back over there, well behind the tower. And further up right there. So here's the aerial views. And again, we decreased the size of the building, so it's actually a little bit shorter than the building across the street. But you can see that it's not necessarily out of character with what's going on on the street. Um, there it is from by the river, by the drone. And you could see the context here. It's not, this is, uh, looking back from Fifth Avenue or from above Fifth Avenue on the north side. And you could see right there is where the townhouses, the row houses across the street end, and that's where our taller portion of the building, the federal street portion of the building starts. So it's really right across the street from the parking. Another view from the east. Um, the historic report was done by Claudia in our office and Claudia has her degree from Columbia in preservation. Um, so if I misspeak, it's because I don't. And I'm gonna, I'll just run you through what we did and I was there while we were doing this. I was on site. I think it was Cosmo bulleted here. Buildings are not on the national registry. Chipo does not have jurisdiction. We are working with a local salvage company and I think it's been said in, in a number of times that if there is anything there worth saving or if anybody wants, you know, anybody can come, they will let somebody in and take that and put that to good use. But I will attest and the report will suggest that there is very little left in those buildings. They've been cannibalized over the years. The exterior, the main portion of the building, the brick portions of the building are in fair to, I would say, poorer condition. But in fair condition, the rear of the building and all the additions that were added on over time are in poor condition. Um, in fact, in two of the buildings, the entire back wall has been taken out to have access to those additions. And the additions are, you know, in most cases, they're wood frame buildings with brick. But the additions were added on over time. And again, there, there's no plumbing left in there. No plumbing systems really left in there. The electrical systems have all been cannibalized. And there is, with the exception of the, and I'm going to get the address wrong, the building closest to King's Landing one on Federal Street has some molding and things left in the stairwell, but it is, I think, in Claudia's terms, it's not significant and it's minimal. Um, and in order for, I'm probably jumping ahead here. But in order to renovate those buildings, um, we looked at, we probably could get ten to eleven units in there. Um, Cosmo's office did an analysis of that and ten to eleven units. You would have to rebuild the entire buildings and basically keep the front portion of the shell. And there's a lot of work to do on those. So again, that's all in the study. Cosmo said Steve's here. If anybody has any questions, there was a phase one archaeological study done. And there's a letter to the engineer, Troy engineer, that Chipo said that there's no jurisdiction. Next. And that's not me.
Good evening, Alana Moran with VHB. Uh, we completed a traffic and parking, parking review for the project. Actually going to take this off while I talk, hear me a little better. Um, so the image right now that you're, that you're looking at is just the existing conditions in the study area, which I know you're all familiar, familiar with. Um, but the one-way network, the site location of the building itself. The project has proposed access, uh, from King Street to the, to the site and then exiting on to Federal. So as I noted, we complete a, a traffic trip generation and a parking evaluation for this project. Using information published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers in their traffic generation manual, trip generation manual. We estimated the number of trips at the site for both the residential units and for that small area of retail as well. As you can see, the site is expected to generate twenty-two trips during that morning peak hour and thirty-four during the evening peak hour. So that's just say from an hour from seven to eight in the morning would be the twenty-two trips. And then maybe from four-thirty to five-thirty in the evening would be the thirty-four trips. At other times of the day, it's gen, it's reduced. That's the peak. Now, the other thing about, uh, the parking or the trip generation piece of this is that because this is in more of an urban core type of setting, there is the opportunity to look at a reduced, uh, land use scenario. Uh, because it's walkable, because there's transit, because there's all those good multimodal features. And we didn't do that with this analysis. We stayed with the more conservative trip generation estimate so that it would be kind of that worst case. If this were generating, um, or if we use the, the code that would allow that more reduced trip generation because of the multimodal nature. It's roughly twelve trips during the morning peak hour and then eleven during the PM peak hour for that residential portion of it. Um, so a total of thirteen during the morning peak and, um, seventeen during the PM peak. So about half. So the other piece of this was really parking, um, because, you know, as they're out there, the, it's certainly being utilized. Um, so the project itself onsite, and this is not including the, the Jacob Street parking lot at all, but this is just the site stuff. So is int, anticipated to supply sixty-eight spaces. But then there's also the removal of the existing use on the site and that's about twenty-one spaces that would be on-street parking. Um, for the use currently there, the sixteen apartment units. Then, uh, there is a removal of a single space due to a curb cut. So the parking demand is roughly eighty-four spaces. And again, that's also done using information published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. I know that for this site in this zoning code or in this particular zone, there is no parking requirement, but the applicant certainly is, has taken the time to put it in. So the net result for the project without the Jacob Street is kind of an increase of six parking spaces in the general area. And then if you add in the spaces from the Jacob Street parking lot, which will be public spaces, it's a net increase of forty-four spaces in the general study area.
Lana, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, would, would you mind explaining what the difference between project parking supply and part project parking demand is? I'm sorry, I just need.
Yeah, absolutely. So the parking supply is the number of spaces that, um, are being proposed. So there's sixty-two that are kind of covered, the garage spaces. And then there's another six that are, um, kind of at grade, like on-street type of spaces. So that's the supply, uh, that's being provided. And then the demand is based upon using that information provided by IT. So in addition to their trip generation manual, they also have a parking generation manual. So for a sixty-two units, units of, um, multifamily housing and the one in a one thousand five hundred square feet of retail, the demand at the site is estimated as eighty-four spaces.
And so the ratio, thank you. And that's what I thought, but the ratio between the project demand and the existing demand is equal. The ratio, correct? So if there's sixteen units that generate a demand of twenty-one, whatever that ratio is the same going from sixty-two units to eighty-four spaces. Is that a true statement?
So yes, except for the eighty-four also includes the retail component. So from, from a strictly residential piece, the number is, and it's in the, the letter that we provided, the number is, um, eighty-one spaces. So just about the same. Cause the retail isn't going to generate that much.
Yep. And that is very, it's very formulaic.
Yep.
And it, and it is, um, it doesn't acknowledge that the current units in those buildings. They theoretically present a demand of twenty-one spaces, but today probably not demanding those parking spaces, right? I'm just putting that on the table.
That, it may be that people are not parking, uh, but it also has the potential for this particular, for the new site, for people not to have a car either. So the both of those could be true. The, um, and again, similar to the trip generation where we had the opportunity to use an urban, more dense uh, code for the parking generation, we didn't do that. We used the general urban suburban so that it was showing kind of the worst case potential scenario. And so if we look at, um, using a code for a more dense multimodal network as Troy is, then instead of generating eighty-one spaces, it's closer to fifty-five, fifty-four, fifty-five. Let me make sure I have that number exactly right for you. Uh, fifty-six. It's fifty-six instead of the eighty-one.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I have an additional, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Um, so regarding the indoor spaces, it says sixty-eight, uh, project parking spaces will be supplied. Um, on the site plans, I see twenty-five parking spaces on one level. So are there, am I misunderstanding how many levels of parking?
So there's two.
And does the second one provide the remainder beyond the twenty-five spaces?
There are sixty-two garage spaces and then six that are not in a garage. So they're just kind of an open air in the alley. Thank you very much. So there's the sixty-two in the garage. And then there's the additional six that are in the alley.
Okay. So the sixty-two within the garage is one of those levels, uh, further, you know, subterranean. Is it further down basically?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Um, I have a question too. Going back to the slide before this. The one about the number of people passing through, is that? Is that supposed to be the number of people who are just going down the street, but not parking on the street?
So this would be the number of trips to the site. So these would be the people that would, um, enter into the facility and then park in the garage and then do whatever they're doing, you know, going home or going to work or whatever it may be. Um, and then similarly, the number of people that would be leaving during that time. So the way that this is, um, the way to kind of look at this is to say that during the morning peak hour, the, there'd be six vehicles that are going to drive in and park. And there'd be sixteen vehicles that are going to exit out and leave typically it, it for a residential, it's always about people going to and from work is, is where the peak, um, comes from.
Do you have background traffic data on Fifth Avenue?
Um, I'm not sure that I have that number, but what I will tell you is this particular project site, the Fifth Avenue access is emergency only. So it's entering from King and exiting on to Federal. I don't have that number with me for.
No. So this is exiting on to King?
This, this is exiting to Federal.
Yes.
Entering from King. So it's a one way.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Um, one more question. Um, how is that extrapolated? Because it seems to me if you have a sixty-two unit building, how can you only have sixteen people leaving in the morning?
Right. Yes. Okay. So this comes up a lot. So it's, um, usually for, um, you know, when we commute to or from, there's like a two-hour period during the morning where people are tending to leave their, their homes to do that. And so say if I live on a block with a hundred homes, that, um, you know, we're not all one hundred of us going to get out and go at the exact same time. We're going to split up over that two-hour period. So maybe seventy of us are going to leave during that peak, right? But that's for a single family home or a single family neighborhood. When it comes to a multifamily, an apartment or a condo type of facility, the, the data is a little bit different. Fewer people are actually traveling during those peak periods in comparison to the, uh, to the number of, of units or the number of dwellings, so to speak. Um, the other part about that is that often when it's like a one-bedroom facility or a two-bedroom, then there's fewer people in the household. So at my house, we have three drivers, four cars. So there's a lot going on over there, but if it's a one-bedroom apartment, then it's maybe one car per unit. Did that make sense?
No, but.
I can also tell you that it's based upon counts and data that are collected throughout the United States and Canada of existing types of uses. So for this one, it's a, a mid-rise multifamily housing. So that's anywhere from say three to ten floors and all of the data, uh, that's being used to compute the trip generation rate that we use is based upon other facilities like that. Three to ten floors and a certain number of units. Conclusions. Yes. So, um, as we noted, the project is expected to generate twenty-two trips, uh, during the morning peak and thirty-four during the evening peak. Uh, this is basically one new car entering or exiting every two to three minutes uh, of a peak hour. And that's again, a worst case condition because we looked at urban suburban as opposed to kind of a dense multimodal facility. And that's again, a worst case condition because we looked at urban suburban as opposed to kind of a dense multimodal facility. This is less than what we look at. So Institute of Transportation Engineers and the New York State DOT have a policy that talks about when you really need to look at analysis at off-site intersections. And basically that policy is that if you have 100 vehicles on any single approach to an intersection, then you need to start looking at off-site intersections. This is well below that, that New York State DOT and IT threshold, which is why we're focusing purely on the site access itself. Um, and then again, the project is expected to result in a net increase, uh, for parking in the study area itself.
Before David comes up, I just want to make sure everybody understands. Having this project being built as proposed will benefit the community by at least six park, additional parking spots. In addition to the 38, there would be an additional 44 spots added to that Fifth Avenue community. So if, if we build this project, it's going to enhance the availability of parking to the community by 44 spots. Okay, th- this, this is the reason why we had a professional from VHB, large firm, come here, present this to you so that you understood that we just did not make this stuff up. Okay, it's very important for, for us in the community to understand that. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, David Smith, Principal with Planning and Development Advisors. I'm a sole proprietor, uh, land use planner and real estate development consultant. This is my first time appearing before your board. I'm honored and privileged to present to you, particularly in a live setting. Cosmo had asked that I give a little bit of my background because this is my first time here. And I, I may not look it, but I've been doing this job at this profession for more than 30 years. Um, I've have a, a sole proprietary practice for the past eight years. My current assignments include, uh, the comprehensive plan for the town of Newburgh. I recently finished the comprehensive plan for the village of Irvington. Uh, I'm reviewing a, an 1,177 unit, quarter million square foot redevelopment of the former General Motors site in the village of Sleepy Hollow. I have an 88 unit mixed units development, uh, transit oriented development, uh, in the village of Terrytown. And I'm currently working on the entitlement for, uh, the redevelopment of the United Hospital property in the village of Portchester, which includes 775 units, uh, and about 20,000 square feet and 140 key hotel. Uh, that's project started, uh, with Starwood is continued with, uh, with Rose. So I'm, I'm a, I'm a little uncomfortable and, and kind of talking about my background. If you notice on my, uh, social media, I don't have any selfies. Uh, I like let my work speak for itself. So with that, uh, Cosmo has asked that I, uh, provide you with, uh, some background on, uh, the proposed project, the economic benefits. I think to start off with, uh, Cosmo may have mentioned it, but certainly I will start with that this represents a $17 million investment within the city of Troy. That's not insignificant. What we've tried to do is, is evaluate, all right, so how does that play out, uh, initially and then long-term? And so the initial evaluation, uh, based on, uh, the construction, based on Cosmo's experience, uh, you're gonna be generating approximately 75 to 50, uh, construction related jobs. And those are, uh, temporary, uh, to the extent, and I, I think Cosmo, it's an 18-month construction period. And so the cumulative wages for, um, uh, for that, for the construction, uh, component of it ranges from four, four million to 2.6 to 4 million over that time period. And then once the project is completed, there is a, a permanent construct, a permanent, uh, employment component, including, uh, the, uh, the retail component, which we average, expect approximately three employees. And then with building operations, you have another three employees. So there's, um, again, I think a, an important component to understanding, um, kind of the immediate benefits. And then switching to the long-term, uh, I think most substantially you have the introduction of 62 new households within convenient walking distance of, uh, kind of the retail core, the historic core of the city of Troy. And I think that's important. And i- it's one thing that I think is important. It's, and it's a planning concept that I like to talk about. It's while it's within walking distance. Planners like to use funny acronyms, but each of those households is gonna spend some portion of their discretionary income uh, within the greater Troy community. I think that's a, a particularly important benefit to, uh, to the proposed project. And we've outlined based on, um, uh, Bureau of Labor Statistics and, and, and survey data on, on how that, uh, discretionary income is calculated. I think you can go to the next screen. So based on that, based on, uh, occupants and 95% occupancy, which is considered a full occupancy for a rental project, you'll have an expected, uh, pre-tax income approximately almost $4 million. And of that, not all that 4 million gets spent in the community, but we're, based on the, the survey data, uh, approximately 35% of that, uh, is spent, uh, lower, 32% is spent locally. So when you, when you start to run the numbers on an annual basis, you have approximately 1.2 million in additional purchasing power, discretionary income coming from this particular project, some portion of which is gonna be spent within the local Troy neighborhood, the greater Troy neighborhood. Uh, and that includes things, food, uh, services, somebody needs to have, uh, their hair done or, uh, needs a, a tailor, uh, shoes repaired. Certainly, th- those are all things that help inject vitality within the, the local economy. And having a 24, a more of a 24/7 presence, I think additionally, uh, helps, uh, within, uh, the downtown setting. So we go to the next slide. Oh, let me, let me, if you keep going, but the other thing that Cosmo had reminded me is that with this particular project is generating approximately 75,000 to, uh, to $50,000 in new fees, uh, for the city. So, um, Mr. Chairman, we had, uh, submitted a, a document dated August 2nd. I think you, you, hopefully you've had it and you've had a chance to read it, where we've, uh, evaluated, uh, the city of Troy's comprehensive plan, how this project, uh, we think, uh, meets many of the goals and objectives. And just to start, you know, I, as part of our presentation, as part of the work that I do in looking at redevelopment in other urban settings, downtown settings, is to identify that, that there, that, um, there are smart growth goals. And then smart growth is a, a planning policy that, um, many communities, uh, look at, including fostering development in downtown settings with a mixed use, directing development towards communities with existing infrastructure to support it, water, sewer, roads, uh, creation of a range of housing opportunities, uh, for, uh, distinct housing types, fostering distinctive, attractive communities with a strong sense of place. And I think, um, our architect has, has, uh, described how they've evaluated the, uh, the design intent and creating walkable neighborhoods. So with that, um, you know, we evaluated, next slide please. Uh, we evaluated, there are more, there are essentially four main goals within the comprehensive plan that we evaluated. Um, there's probably 20 some odd, uh, individual policies. I'm not gonna go through each one of those. Uh, the time is, uh, probably growing late and you, you, uh, you may want to move on. But I think the, the, to summarize, um, the, um, comprehensive plan, goal one, grow the economy and the population. So it's promoting the city center. Uh, it's a key area for residential growth. And I think one of your components is the city center will be planned to accommodate more than 1,000 new residents uh, in the next few, uh, five years, as well as significant employment growth and new recreational, cultural and entertainment uses. So we certainly think that this particular project is meeting that specific goal. Uh, and again, adding to the 24/7 vitality, uh, with the added foot traffic that comes with that. Promoting safe, uh, promoting healthy, safe and green neighborhoods. Although the architect didn't, uh, touch on it, there are certain principles, enhanced lighting, security cameras are included as part of the, uh, the design package. The, uh, the housing stock is in, and Mr. Marfion intends on marketing this to, uh, young professionals, a mix of young professionals, uh, empty nesters, baby boomers looking to downsize, as well as, uh, students that are attending the, uh, the local institutions here in, in Troy. Invest in mobility, accessibility and transportation. Again, the, the applicant is including a, uh, bike, uh, bike storage inside the, uh, the garage as well as bike racks on Federal Street. Um, all these sidewalks will be ADA compliant. Goal six, supporting, uh, compact growth. Uh, I, again, I think, you know, the, the proposed project is approximately two acres. You have 62 units. So that's providing for a, uh, a very compact design, which includes a mixed use element on the, on the street front, which includes, um, uh, that additional 1,500 square feet. Again, to, to, uh, generate, um, activity and a visual interest from the, uh, from the, uh, from the pedestrian view, pedestrian realm. So I, I've quickly gone through, um, how we think the, uh, proposed plan, um, meets the goals and objectives of the, uh, of the comprehensive plan. We think it certainly is well within, um, the, uh, the projected goals. It certainly meets the zoning and your zoning is intended to implement, uh, your comprehensive plan. So with that, I think we're gonna go to, uh, Cosmo who'll sum up the benefits and then to Mr. Lab. Thank you.
Okay, real quick. $17 million is probably gonna be a little bit more now because of commodity prices. We talked a lot about economic impact. We spoke a lot about, you know, full-time jobs, discretionary spendings, construction jobs. Next. And most importantly, fitting within the revitalization of Federal Street. And, and really, you know, I know everybody says parking is a big problem. Yeah. Like I said before, and I'm gonna keep on emphasizing it, you know, increasing available parking to community by 44 spaces and adding in 111 parking spots over and beyond what is required by code, which is very important. Thank you, John. Please conclude.
Thanks, Cosmo. We know where we're heading is for you to make a secret determination hopefully tonight. And, um, I just want to remind everybody where we started with the last project and where we are now. I think Cosmo and his design team have been incredibly responsive to all of the issues that were raised by the members of the commission a- and the public, um, in terms of, it's just very apparent with the building design, lowering it on, on Fifth Avenue and raising it on Federal Street so it's compatible with the neighborhood. My 36 years of being a land use attorney, I've never seen, um, the situation where the, the church next door, the pastor sent the letter saying that the two objectors who were, who had actually hired an attorney to oppose the project, trustees from the church, didn't have authority, um, were not representing the church and the church wasn't opposed to it. Pretty crazy fact pattern, but that said, as was mentioned tonight, nevertheless, Cosmo had the building moved 20 feet from the church and that driveway in a previous iteration would have been accessible for cars. And now all the cars will be known, except for emergency vehicles would access the building from, from Fifth Avenue. So that whole issue of traffic on Fifth Avenue and the impact on the church, um, even though the church wasn't opposed, we felt it was the right thing to do to, to make those changes. As Cosmo mentioned with parking, you know, we know we're in a zone where it's not required, but obviously there's a need for parking. And the idea that, that he listened and went out and made the offer and the agreement to create the 38 parking spaces, which, you know, are blocks from this building, it's not gonna really be for the residents of the building, but for the neighborhood. That's something that's pretty unusual a- as well. There's been a lot of talk from some of the neighbors about, um, the existing character of the four townhouse buildings that'll be removed. But, um, we've spoke previously, there was criminal activity in those buildings because they were just so dilapidated. Besides the fact that they didn't have archaeological aesthetic value, it's, didn't help the neighborhood because of the, the character of some of the people that were living in them, um, a- and some squatters. So this area needs to be redeveloped and the, the idea is to, um, bring people in that'll be part of the community and be positive for the community. And, and that's what the comp plan is really about, what David talked about. I, I read a letter from, um, one of the opposing neighbor groups, um, where they talked about, maybe we could do less than 62 units. But as you saw from the comp plan, the goal of Troy is to increase the population. And this, that's a good thing and that's what we're, we're trying to accomplish here. Finally, in terms of zoning, I know last time there was a discussion when you went through Seeker, uh, about whether this was compatible with the neighborhood. And, um, there's case law that I referred to in the cover letter when we resubmitted a few weeks ago. And I know Andy's familiar with, um, that if you have a project that completely complies with zoning, that means there's been a legislative determination that it's compatible with, with the zone, with the community. So you can't legally make a determination that it's not compatible when we're doing exactly what the code calls for in terms of, in terms of the zoning code and what's allowed. And in fact, as was mentioned, a 10-story building is permitted. But, you know, because of what the board asked us to do, the taller section is now taller than previously and it's nowhere near 10 stories because it's on Federal Street and, and the area on Fifth, respecting what's there now. And the character of that street is reduced to the three stories, uh, with, you know, the half-story below. So, um, certainly Cosmo has been trying to be responsive. We see this as very positive for this community and, and that there should be no reason why an environmental impact statement is, is required for something that meets zoning after all the changes that have been done at, at your request. So we ask you to close the public hearing tonight and to issue a negative declaration so we can move forward on, on site plan. Thanks very much.
Thank you. I know the, some of the commissioners commented during the presentation. Are there any additional commissioner comments at this time or questions for the applicant?
I have one question and one comment. And the, the, maybe they're both comments. Thanks, Cosmos. So, uh, one is regarding the lobby and the elevator lobby. Uh, we've talked about those architectural components of the building repeatedly. And we recognize the value that you believe that brings to the design. Uh, and I wouldn't argue that. I want to express my mild concern uh, about that because they will be lit, uh, probably 24/7. Uh, I think it's really important that what happens, that the interior design be developed because we will see it all the time. And I, my, my concern that is that it's an empty space and it, it, it doesn't exhibit any life. So that, I, I suppose I'm simply encouraging the development of that interior space. That isn't necessarily the purview of the planning commission to tell you how to develop interior design, but I think it will have an impact on how the building is experienced. Bypass or spy. That's my first comment. My second is that, uh, and, uh, this was presented in the sort of the planning analysis that we just heard a few minutes ago. Uh, healthy, safe and green development. Um, and of course, the term green can mean all sorts of things or nothing. Um, the one thing that I observe, uh, a- and, and I'm surprised that I didn't recognize it to the, to the degree that I do now is that there is an abundance of mature trees on your property. And then of course, uh, across the street, I think it's at O'Neill. And.
Where?
I, I think it's at the O'Neill Apartments.
Right.
Right? And so yours will be gone. And I wonder if there's a way of, you are proposing new street trees. Um, but if there's a way that your project could go a little bit above and beyond, simply adding the street trees. I don't know what that is. Like I said, I, this is really just coming to the, the forefront of my mind now. But if there's some way that you could contribute to the city and its greenscape, you know, maybe filling in street trees along the whole block of Fifth or something like that. I think that that. or something like that. I think that that would be appreciated.
So so I could tell you, and my director of construction is here, and he's smiling under his mask. Because on Kings One, I've been I was trying like hell to get street trees on King Street. Okay, we dug a eight, not even twelve inches, and we found large utility vaults. At that point, he called me up and he said, I'm not doing it. And then I then we just argued a little bit back and forth. But he it's that's I'm all for that. Problem becomes when there's utility in in the street. Now, Fifth Avenue, I believe, Nick, we should be in a better situation. Right? And I think we could accommodate that on Fifth. And what we could do is not part of the development of the planning process, but part of good faith and trying to work with the city and doing more projects. I would like to see, Nick, some trees along Fifth Avenue and even along Federal if if we could do it. Now, along Federal, we have a waterline. I think the sidewalk is big enough that we could accommodate that. But yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
And and I also want to say that on that 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 whole area, that lobby space, I have I have our creative director, who's also my brother, who's has a master from University of Pennsylvania in fine arts, will be charged to making that area look real nice from the street.
Good to hear. Thank you very much.
Cosmo, I also have a question.
Sure.
And so at this point in the process, we're we're reviewing this seeker for potential adverse impacts. And the the most frequent opposition or contention seems to be around two things. The the parking, which we've addressed throughout your presentation and community character, which is more nebulous, subjective concept. If I could ask you to kind of put yourself on the other side of the story and maybe maybe speak to what you see as the 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 parts of the project that are least in keeping with the existing community character. What what is it in the project that you see as not fitting in? I recognize that that's an odd question.
No, it's 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 I actually liked. You know, I actually liked the different types of facade on Fifth Avenue. And I know the board did not like it. But I thought having the the different types of facades like George presented at the very beginning emulated more the brownstone, the different types of brownstone looks. Now, I'm an engineer by trade, brother.
Likewise.
Right? That's why I got him. He's the he's the other side of the brain. I'm one side of the brain. But I think you know, I think maybe that, but you know, we we I don't know what else. It's 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 a tough question. I mean, I really think there there's a lot of brick in Troy. We try to we try to, you know, I charge George to try to keep some of the header details you know, in 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 concert with some of the windows that are around some of the architecture that is around Troy. You know, we we did the three and a half story brownstone look. You know, maybe George, we could had, we could maybe add like a little gate in front of those in front of those steps. There is one there, right? So yeah, I mean, I I don't I don't see anything else. I I would definitely like to have some street trees. I agree with you. Everywhere. The more trees, the more landscaping, the better the project looks, I I think. So that's that's what I think.
Thank you. I from from reading through all the community comments, the emails we get, the letters, it seems to me that on the community character topic, the the two biggest points are the massing, the scale and the aesthetic in general, be it the facade or the the orientation of stoops, things, awnings, things like that. I think that there there's always room to revise, improve, and I don't know. It was just thought exercise. I wanted to work.
I mean, the the massing, I mean, we and this is why we we charged George to look at the massing across the street and look at and and actually incorporate the the silhouettes of what what was happening to make sure that we weren't keeping with the massing. I mean, I I think we do. I think we do that. I I think George did a great job when he comes around the corner, going from seven to six with the step in and then going to 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 the three and a half story. I mean, I think that's that's well thought out. Some folks did not like that. And you know, he was going to change it and we we, you know, we're we'd we'd get all these opinions and 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 which but at the end of the day, we're confident in our ability and I'm confident in George's team to present this project. So we we always take everybody's opinion and we see what's best for for everybody because you're never going to be able to satisfy everyone. Right? And I think I say it again, I think George did an incredible job. I think we went above and beyond with the brick. Turning the corner. I think that could probably be siding like a lot of the brownstones around here, just the facade is usually brick. But George insisted. And I was okay with that.
Thanks. So another frequently voiced concern is the loss of the eligible buildings, the register eligible buildings. And I think that a lot of that is again about the the neighborhood feeling, the the sense of neighborhood. And I think that effort can be spent towards towards making any project in that location feel as if it's part of the neighborhood as opposed to a distinct or isolated unit that exists within the neighborhood. I guess I'm just trying to recapture all the input we've gotten so far.
I I think going down to the three and a half stories, it really does capture that Fifth Avenue. Even though, you know, it 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 is a little bit contradictory to what the to what that zoning really wants, right? It is. Zoning does not want more three and a half story buildings on Fifth Avenue. Okay? So it is in it. We did that very, it was a very, very strong opinion from the from the community, from the board. So we did that.
I think that's a good answer. Thank you.
I have a couple of things.
Sure.
Is this on? Is it working? Okay. Two, two things, two different categories, basically. The one is much more subjective than the other. So I'll get that one out of the way first. And that is the plan. And the comprehensive plan. I think it's like the Bible. You can pull out what you want and and justify anything, but I can find just as much in the comprehensive plan that negates a lot of your assertions about how wonderful this will be for for the neighborhood and for the city. Most specifically in the comprehensive plan, things about protecting heritage, protecting low income, low impact development and a rehabilitation of Troy's older and vacant housing stock. I'm not advocating for saving those buildings per se. I'm just saying that it seems that the other side of the the equation has sort of been nicely pushed to the side. And I just wanted to bring that out. The other thing, the more important thing is the idea that Shippo has totally signed off on this project. I don't find that to be true from
No, no. Shippo has not signed off on this project. Nobody's made the claim that Shippo signed off. Shippo has communicated with me directly that they are not an involved or an involved agency and that no permit from them is required.
But we have this letter dated January twenty seventh to Mr. Strickman saying that we note that the proposed project is located in National Register, da 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 da. Based on this review, we have concerns with the proposed project. Demolition of four National Register eligible buildings would be substantially detrimental to historic resources and the integrity of the historic district. We strongly recommend that alternatives to the proposed demolitions be considered. And then it goes on.
And and that's exactly what the applicants provided this evening. They they looked into rehabilitating those buildings as an alternative to removal of the buildings, and they've determined it's not economically feasible.
But does not the the existence of of their concerns automatically put this into a type one action?
This has been a type one action since its inception.
Require a an EIS review?
No.
I think the question is whether or not a positive or negative declaration is required as a result of what you're saying. Not whether or not it's a type one action or not.
All right.
Just so we're all on the same page. There's no question. This is a type one action under seeker.
Okay.
Under the seeker regulations for type one actions, there is a presumption that an environmental impact statement will need to be prepared. It's a presumption. It's specifically stated as a presumption in the seeker regs. That presumption can be overcome by evidence and reports submitted by the applicant. In most instances, in my experience, the presumption is indeed overcome. It's more in in my experience, and I've been doing land use twenty six years, more type ones are negdect than are posdect. Positive declarations are in the in the minority of the number of type one actions that are reviewed and not just here, but that's based upon my experience statewide.
I just wanted to throw it out there and, you know, get my questions answered.
Thank you, Suzanne.
I did want to echo the comments about the the parts of the the Troy's plan, comprehensive plan towards green initiatives. I I think that there is room for more planning, more development on that within the site plan. And then there's also a component of the comprehensive plan towards walkable neighborhoods. This is kind of moving outside of whether or not there's adverse impact and more so comments towards what the site plan is. But I I I know that Troy's alleys seem to be being developed around here like Franklin Alley. And I'm wondering if there's opportunities for more development on some of the alley spaces.
The current the current alley space that we have that that's between the two buildings? Is that what you're saying?
Or and and the street outside. I guess that's not alley on that on Federal, but
Laundry Place.
Yes.
I'm sorry. So what is the what is the question?
The question.
I think he's talking about the alley. Is there is there a was there any thought given to activating the alley between Kings One and Kings Two? I I believe it's still called Laundry Place.
It's it's laundry place. It's technically a ci- a a city road. Like, if we want to close it down, we would have to get a permit. Right? The only thing that we could do, because I I I would like eventually to figure something out for that as well. Not now. Because but but like we cannot gate that. It's a city road. The only thing that we could do right now, which has helped a lot from Kings One was a lot, a lot like any any anytime something happens, the police constantly with us and to us and saying, okay, can I see the videotape? See what's going on. What we're going to do is when the light light it even more, we're going to put another set of video cameras. That's really, we're going to pave it, which we already did. But now actually, the grading is going to turn out to be better, right, Nick? Which is going to work better for the fire access. So we could there's really not much room you could do there in terms of landscaping or anything like that. But so
No, I mean, I I'm just chiming in here. Fire services took a close look at Laundry Place during Kings One. And essentially, what what's been arrived at is needed in order to provide fire services
Right.
Kings One and certainly to provide it to Kings Two.
Right. But Kings Two is going to benefit. It's going to make the fire devices go turn, make that radius even better. Because there's not that little jut out that's there now. It's going to eliminate that.
I'm just saying that looking into using repurposing any of that area for pedestrian access or for anything other than fire access may need to be reviewed by by fire services to make sure.
Right. But I know where you're coming from because where I live, we we have those alleys. We we open them up on Friday nights and Saturday nights and the restaurateurs set up shop and it's pretty neat. So I I know definitely where you're going. I think that could be a future thing that could probably happen if Troy decides to give that land to the LDC and maybe they could do something with it with a with a private public partnership, but
So I have one more question regarding parking.
Yeah, no, I'm going to before you do that, I'd like to talk a little bit about green. And and I want to tell you, like, some of the stuff that we do. Yeah, you know, like, everybody uses the word green, right? But like, this day and age, like, everything is leaning towards that, right? Even the energy codes. Like when when people say, oh, we're energy efficient, you have to be. It's New York State code. You have to be energy efficient. So some of the stuff that we do, not just for these projects, but you know, company wide, we try to, we try to work on you know, air, air purification and water purification. That's one thing that we do a lot of and making sure that our surfaces in our homes are solid surfaces. There's no carpets anywhere in our in our buildings inside the units. We may have them in the corridors just because of noise. But we do really stress a lot, like, we put ionizers in our HVAC system in Kings One and some of our other projects to purify the air in the HVAC system. We do water filtration systems on incoming water coming in. And these are some of the things that we go a little bit above and beyond. If we can, we do increase. We we do do, we do, we try to do a little bit better than energy, energy. You know, the the energy models, what's required by state. I think we were a little bit better on Kings One. That that was like by by nature of design, a little bit of an accident, little like we're patting ourselves in the back, but and we were able to do it with and 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 so so that's some of the stuff that we do. And we try to differentiate projects from from others by doing these things. Yeah, every everything is a low VOC material. So I'm not going to sell you that that we do low VOC materials. Everything now is low VOC. Right?
When I speak to to green initiatives, I think of creative uses like rooftop gardens, things like urban apiaries, things like rainwater or solar systems that can be
Yeah.
features like that. That's what I'm bringing up personally.
Car, electrical car charging stations, things of that nature. We we try to do that. In fact, we we may try to do that. We we will do that for Troy, for the Kings Two project.
So I just have one question about parking. You've got the parking in underground and then you have the other parking lot. But by building this building, you're eliminating the five, six parking spots that were supposed to be for Kings One, correct?
Yeah, but so so we're taking those those spots. It it wasn't supposed to be for Kings One. It was just, we owned that property and we wanted to finish that lot instead of leaving it dilapidated.
Okay.
But 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 we 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 are providing those spots in the alley for it. I mean, it's it's a kind of a moot point because it's there's no parking required at all. So we're just reshifting that those parking areas somewhere else. I mean,
Okay, but my question is you've you've done this wonderful thing of of giving them K two parking. But and saying that it's it's, you know, above and beyond what's needed for the block and for the tenants of Kings Landing Two and everything. But what about Kings Landing One? Those people are all going to park in the on the street, perhaps in your adjacent perhaps in your adjacent lot that you're providing, and you're still not gonna have parking. I know you didn't have to, but that doesn't mean those cars aren't gonna be there, because, you know. So it seems like the advantages that you're touting about how you're going to have more parking than is necessary and get negated by your own first project or the people in your own first project.
I could just tell you right now, we, this, this project, this current project is providing, you know, 44 new parking spots. I understand what you're saying, but right now we're talking about Kings Two.
I was on the commission at the time Kings One was approved. The, the parking that you're referring to was not actually included in the count that was approved for the development. It was left out purposely.
Yes.
Because it was a lot that could be developed at a future date. And so while the parking was included on the site plan, it was actually not included in the approved parking count, the parking that was provided for Kings One. That was additional parking that was constructed, but it was not purposely for Kings One. And even if it was, and even if it was, there is nothing that prohibits any applicant or owner of property from deciding to develop their property a second time and doing something different.
Yeah, but that's not my point.
No, your point is somehow the elimination of those six spaces is gonna cause a detriment to Kings One.
Those six spaces are six spaces. That's not the big deal. I'm just saying that in saying that there is enough parking now, please shut up, because we provided all of this, doesn't, doesn't include all the other parking that is needed from Kings Landing One, which, you know, is there.
So I'm saying, all of the parking approved for Kings Landing One will still be, there's a parking garage for Kings Landing One.
There is?
There's a parking garage on the entire first floor of Kings One. You guys have one more than one space per unit for Kings One in that parking garage.
Now, we have 38 spots.
There you go.
Okay, so that's never been brought up in terms of.
Because it's not part of this proposal.
It's the same company, it's the same.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine. We have a parking, we have parking there. You know, it gets filled up. You know, every once in a while, there's, you know, I mean, it's, we don't see, you know, it's like saying, well, you know, the rest of the brownstones and apartments on Fifth Avenue don't have parking provided. It's, 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 it's an historic project. I respect what you're saying. But I think we're going above and beyond for the parking. You know, if the board truly feels that this is a problem, they should revisit the zoning for the parking.
Well, I think that's outside the purview of the board, though my understanding is that the city is examining citywide. Sorry about that. I was just saying that's outside the purview of the board. But my understanding is the city is reexamining its zoning code citywide as a separate matter.
Right, absolutely.
The board can absolutely make recommendations for things like that, though, if they wish to.
Certainly.
Thank you.
I actually had a question about traffic generation, and, you know, the study that was presented is very helpful, and I understand that it's based on industry standards. I was just curious if you had looked at traffic generation as a result of Kings One, which, as I understand it, is similar in size. I wasn't on the commission at the time that that project was considered. But just to see if the traffic generation of Kings One was in line with these standards to see if they hold up with respect to what is admittedly a similar project in a very similar area.
So just, I mean, I could, I mean, if you, if you just do a ratio between 52 and 62 and what's, what's been provided here, you could see that you're still below the 100 mark. And I'm, and I'm not talking as an owner, I'm talking as a professional engineer, but she's the practicing one, so she could.
Great, hi, thank you. Again, Alana Moran with BHB. And no, we didn't look at the adjacent site as far as any type of parking trip generation that's going on at that location right now. The data that we use for the trip generation estimates is super robust. So it, sorry, I should take that off when I get started up here. It's really robust data and it's very accurate to different communities throughout the US, throughout Canada. So we would anticipate and expect that it's gonna be very, very close to what this is showing. Oh, then the other, yeah, based on a number of units. Yes, right, it's all based on units.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No. And I had one other question. With the, the new proposal having shifted the bulk of the massing onto Federal Street and then reducing the the Fifth Avenue side to three stories, visually, it looks very much just like two different buildings. And I was curious if you would explore as an alternative, trying to even just segment that out so that you only develop on Federal Street and perhaps even save some of those buildings on Fifth Avenue.
So the problem with doing that, then we take the parking situation to a whole different level, right? Because i- if we try to save those units and develop just on federal, there's no parking. So and I think it's, it would be more beneficial for the community to have the parking and to us too. I'm not saying, we want the parking. So for instance, we could go 10 stories on federal. It's allowed by code. But we weigh that option.
Okay, I was just curious if you guys had explored. Thank you. If there are no more commissioner comments, the public hearing is still open, and I understand we've all heard a lot of public comment on this proposal already at the special session last month. But since there has been new information presented tonight, I did want to give members of the public the opportunity to comment. I know we've also received some comments in writing in advance at the meeting. But if there are any members of the public who did want to comment specifically on the new information presented tonight, I would like to give members of the public the opportunity to do so. And I would stress that you limit your comments to new information presented tonight and not repeat comments that have been previously made on the application overall. And try to limit repetition within the comments made tonight and keep your comments brief to three minutes. And with that said, if you are gonna speak tonight, if you wouldn't mind just taking a seat up in the front rows, that I know if you're waiting to speak. But I will throw it open right now to whoever wants to speak first. And when you start, please announce your name and your address for the record so that we know who is addressing the commission. Thanks.
My name is Ben Botello. I'm an attorney with Raymer Law in Glens Falls, New York. I just wanted to point out a couple procedural things regarding SEACR review. I understand this commission already issued a positive declaration on a very, very similar project earlier in the spring. One of the elements that was a part of your positive declaration was impact to historic properties. Those historic properties will be impacted in an identical fashion with this application. Under SEACR regulations, if an action will have a significant adverse impact on any historical resource, including eligible resources, not just listed resources, then the agency is required to issue a positive declaration. I would say that demolishing eligible resources is the very definition of impact. I mean, you can't decide otherwise. And that if this commission turned around and issued a negative declaration just months after issuing a positive declaration on essentially identical projects, it would be considered arbitrary and capricious by court. One of the commissioners already touched on it, that SHPO has not signed off on this and has not definitively stated that they have no objection. In fact, they do have objections to this project. I think there may have been a disconnect in Aaron's emails with the SHPO individual. But as far as I know, they've never issued any comments taking back their initial comments that they were concerned about the impact to the historic properties and the general layout of the facility. Another item that I noticed from looking through everything is that one of the parcels is owned by Troy Local Development Corporation. And I didn't see their name listed anywhere in the application as an applicant or an owner of one of the parcels, and I was just wondering, have they signed off on all of this? Are they an applicant? There's no letter of authorization authorizing the applicant to, to bring this on their behalf. They're one of the property owners. So I thought that would be an element of due diligence that the commission should look into. And then the last comment relates to attorney John Lapper's point in his letter that said basically, if a project complies with the applicable provisions of a municipal zoning code, then the lead agency cannot make a determination that the project is in line with the character of the community. And that is not true under SEACR regulations. Part two of the SEACR form that this commission filled out with the last application breaks out. Let me just pull it up so I can read it verbatim. It breaks out consistency with community plans and consistency with community character as two separate and distinct elements for this commission to review. Community plans would mean the zoning code and the Comprehensive Plan. Community character is similar, but it's not the same. So you are not required to find that this is in line with the community character of the, of the community. And then one of the commissioners, this is my last point, one of the commissioners mentioned the cumulative effects of parking. Under SEACR, even though this is not review of Kings One, which was already approved, obviously, cumulative effects are required to be reviewed. So parking in general, not just parking demand for this one project, those are all reviewable under SEACR. If anyone has any questions on any of that, feel free to ask. Otherwise, I think there are a few others who would like to speak.
I think there are no questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Trudy Hanmer. I live at 2142 Fifth Avenue, directly across the street from the proposed site of Kings Landing Two. The last time I spoke about environmental and green issues, and I will not repeat those tonight, except to say that I have learned subsequently that the residents of the O'Neill Housing Project, who are senior citizens, many in all cases poor, and many with only wheelchair access, regard that area on the corner as their own park. It's important. But the central issue tonight is size. The fundamental flaw in this project is that it is the wrong size for that space. In 2020, BDC proposed 62 apartments with 144 bedrooms. Here we are in 2021, a new proposal on the surface and the same size. BDC wants your approval, but has only made aesthetic corrections. Downsizing this project needs to happen. And to that end, we hope at Neighborhood, Neighbors Protecting Neighborhoods, that you will consider our proposal for a negotiated settlement. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joe Farmer. I live at 152nd Avenue in the Lancingburg neighborhood of the city of Troy. Planning commissioners have a difficult decision. This has been a difficult project and everybody's tired. The applicant is pushing very hard. We've got the whole team here. They have taken an inordinate amount of time to work over every detail, many of which we can't talk about because they repeated what was said before. I know that one of the things you're thinking about is approving this SEACR and site plan and having this be the last meeting on this project. I'm having a hard time getting my head around that. I don't understand how, at this point, there is enough understanding of the problems, because there hasn't been a lot of discourse about the objections that we have to the project. So I went through and I had the time, I put down some of the things that are going around in my head. I, I'd like to present them to you in order to see if you have the same doubts. I don't pretend to know the answers, but I do know that if these questions are also in your mind, then it's too soon to give this project a why, a pass and move them on to the next step. Here are some of the questions. The planning commission is obviously weighing conceptual approval and full site plan. Are you also considering reexamining the scale of the concept? At, it has been talked about and talked about, and it hasn't happened. Not at this forum. We have not seen the planning commission talking about the possibility of a smaller project. What rights will this approval give to BDC, the developer, if it passes tonight? What stipulations will you add? Will you add safeguards to ensure that the project is constructed as approved? Kings Landing Apartments, the building BDC built on King Street, 14 feet away, was approved as half-market and half-student housing. When it opened, it was 100% reserved for rental to students. Was there ever an approved change to the program? Will anyone investigate that issue? And what can the planning commission do? What can you stipulate to avoid that from happening again? Does granting BDC's application tonight give them the authority to tear down the historic buildings on this site? Are there any other issues standing in their way? Are you comfortable with the issues on SEACR? There's conflicting information. There are direct letters from SEACR. Are you quiet in your mind that you have it right? Would BDC, armed with this approval, be able to buy the historic building from the Local Development Corporation expressly for the purpose of demolishing it? Our group, NPN, has submitted many specific objections to the various SEACR forms that have been filed for BDC. For the most part, these objections were not disproven. Admittedly, it's because they were not addressed in any way. They were dumped over the void into, into the atmosphere. Our objections have not gotten a reasonable dialogue about the issue. If we're wrong, we can stand it. You can tell us. Will the planning commission seek a reply from BDC to any of the items thus far unanswered? And then there's the matter of the SEACR type one action, including an action that involves more than 50 residential units for any site, quote, "that has been determined by the Commissioner of the Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation to be eligible for listing." On October 16th, 2020, the National Register Eligible North Central Troy Historic District was established. The proposed project is located within that district. That means this project with 62 apartments is automatically listed as a type one action. Would it not make more sense for us to work together to seek a better project with a smoother path to approval? Approving or disproving this project tonight are not your only two choices. If you have the doubts in your mind, that I do, or any of them, or your own, there's no reason this has to happen tonight. What, you know, does the pumpkin, does the carriage turn back into a pumpkin at midnight tonight or something? Why do we have to have this project underway tonight? There's clearly a strong push for it. We have suggested an alternative. That is, that the conceptual review of this project be prolonged and the questions of serious alternatives and scale be answered. But maybe you just have small problems you want to work out. Please do not pass this without proper attention to the issues that are small and have not yet gotten to that point in discussion. Those stipulations are very important. Please do not yet let yourselves be pushed into a decision tonight. Please do not yet let yourselves be pushed into a decision tonight unless you feel certain in your mind and heart that it's the best thing for everyone. Thank you very much, and thank you all for your time. Everybody. This has been a tedious project, and I think the planning commission can be proud of how it's acted. Thank you.
Before you go, one of the commissioners has a question. You wouldn't mind? Or Mr. Farmer, okay.
Yes, for for the NPN Neighbors Protecting right here. Yep, I'm Roddy. So I guess my question to you is, why is it that you view bigger as better and smaller as better?
I don't. I am proposing that there is a right size, and I don't know what it is. But I am simply saying that it is obvious that of the things that are happening that we object to, all of them flow from the fact that there are too many apartments wedged onto that site. I don't think we want to have 1,000 new units downtown, that the number 62 added to the number 62 is 124 units on that block. That's a lot. And it's big, and it looks big, and it requires a lot of parking. And I seriously doubt that the parking, that there will be a net benefit to the parking on that block. That strains credibility.
So again, you're saying
I'm not saying, well, I want to see a row of one-family houses there either, or bacon lots. We would not, I don't represent the block. I'm an advisor to the block because I don't live there, but the people on the block would be enthusiastic about infill on the side of the side of the street of a proper scale. Of the height that he has proposed is acceptable. But the buildings aren't, and they would like to see more. There are people in our group who believe that the existing historic buildings on the site can be salvaged. Salvaging a historic building doesn't mean saving every last addition that ever got put on it. The front of those buildings were quite handsome. I'm sorry, the front of those, but we have, I worked with Tapp and Tripp for 40 years doing renovations of buildings you would not believe. And to say that those buildings are beyond repairs is just unbelievable to me. It's literally not believable.
So the position we've repeatedly heard from your group is that it's too big. It's too big is what we keep hearing.
Yes.
But when we ask, why is, in what way is it too big? The what I hear as the first and strongest reaction is always parking. So what else beyond parking is the problem with its size?
Well, the problem, there's the problem with parking is, the problem with the size is twofold. Number one, it's too many apartments. And number two, it's too many bedrooms.
Why?
Actually, let me back that up. Number one problem is too many bedrooms because we have no guarantee that we won't be rented to a student's style apartment. Now, I know the people on the block, and I have nothing against students in those buildings. What we object to are our properties that are rented by the bedroom individually to people who don't make up one household. In other words, if you have a student apartment that's three bedrooms, and you have three different leases and you lock the door in your bedroom, then you have a good chance of having three cars in that bedroom, in that in that unit. So one unit, you start getting three cars, and that really jacks up the parking problem. Because there's just too many people being rented in a certain way that are not a household. They are, they are individual people renting rooms. And that's, that's a concern. That's what, that's what happened in King's Landing.
Andy, could you, could you clarify what purview the board has over who the tenants are within multifamily unit?
Virtually none. You can't base your analysis or your decision making on the type of person that's going to be rented. I believe Mr. Farmer is making the argument that if the, if the rental system is by the bed rather than by the unit, then that will increase parking because three people each renting a bed will, is more likely to result in three cars, whereas a three-bedroom unit shared by a family will have less than three cars. I don't know what empirical evidence exists to back that argument up. The applicant did present that they would be market rate apartments. So I'm not sure where that belief that it will be rented by the bedroom is coming from. I've not heard that or seen that anywhere in the record to this point. But you can't, you can't make any determinations. You can't even use in your analysis the type of a person that may be renting, whether they be students, whether they be elderly. It's just not an appropriate component of your analysis.
Well, again, you stated my position correctly. I did not
I tried.
suggest a discrimination on who rents it. I expressed a concern with how it is constructed. I know it's a fine, fine point, but I expressed a concern with how it's keyed.
So just for clarification, Andy, we can consider for the purposes of secret review, the type of housing, for example, whether or not it's going to be entirely one bedrooms or one and two bedrooms. And my understanding again from the presentation is that there are no three-bedroom units.
And that's correct. And the number of beds is important to your analysis for secret purposes because that's how you calculate sewer usage, water usage, parking requirements are by unit for the ITE. So that's not by beds, but infrastructure impacts, specifically water and sewer are directly derived from number of beds.
Ultimately, the argument circled back to parking. Correct? It was a concern that if there were individual leases per bedroom, that would result in more parking.
But it's clearly the position of NPN. We don't want to see more parking spots. Nobody's complaining about how many parking spots he's putting in. We're complaining about how many apartments he's putting in.
What? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for those questions. I appreciate it.
My name is Dre Elaanza. I live at 2227 Fifth Avenue. And since the topic of parking did come up again, I just want to bring up a couple of things. The reality of parking on these blocks, because I live on these blocks. When I walk down the 2100 block, that's the block where King's Landing Two is proposed on, say, a Sunday night, which is a time when probably most people are going to be at home. You know, before school night or whatever. There's maybe three or four, at about roughly, I don't know, eight, nine o'clock in the evening, there's maybe three or four empty spots on that block. The next block up, which is where the proposed parking lot is, is a longer block, and it has more parking spots there. And there's probably about a half a dozen open spots near the houses on that block. So there's not a lot of wiggle room with having new parking coming in. So first of all, with the Jacob Lot, who is going to maintain it? We've asked this any number of times, and I've never heard an answer of who is going to maintain the Jacob Lot. When it snows, and it does that for several months out of the winter, there are a lot of people, especially people in the neighborhood, who now park in that Jacob Lot. And you can get like a dozen cars there. You can get definitely when Bethel Baptist is in session, you get more than a dozen cars there. So that lot already provides a good dozen spaces. So the paving the lot only increases at 26 spaces, not by 44 spaces or 38 spaces that that was claimed. So who maintains it? Will it be shoveled in the winter? That Jacob Lot is more than a block away for the people on the 2100 block. So say Silva has groceries and her two kids, she can't find a spot on the 2100 block. She has to go up to the next block with the kids and the groceries to get stuff back home. That's, that's where the problem is. That's why people are upset about the parking. Another thing is that according to what had been said before, parking is going to, in the garage for King's Landing Two, the parking in the garage is going to be paid extra. So if you are a tenant there and you want to park in the garage, you have to pay extra. So a lot of people are going to say, hey, I'm not going to pay an extra, I don't know, 100 bucks a month so that I can park in the garage. I'll park on the street. Again, making the local parking tighter than than it was. So we have to take these things into account when we're talking about the parking. I had originally intended on talking about the size, and there have been some comments about that already. But so
You're at four minutes.
Okay, if the project can't be viable as a smaller project, we can find a better site that doesn't have these same problems. There's a whole stretch of land behind Kennedy Towers on Eighth Street that has plenty of room. All the houses have been knocked down. They're already down. Nobody's going to be saying you can't knock them down. It's already this long swath of a long block. Why not do it there? Also, for the first floor retail space, a lot of the similar projects, so the news and Vicina and City Station, they're all going wanting for the retail space on the ground floor. So take that into account when you know, looking at the viability of this project. And I urge that the, that the commission give it a pause deck. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Barb Nelson, Director at TAP. We are a community advocacy agency, and I'm here to support neighbors protecting neighborhoods. I thank you for a very thorough presentation. I just thank you for being here in person. It is so nice. Having watched presentations by Zoom and on PDFs, it's just not the same. And so this is really a great opportunity. So I've sent you a couple of correspondence. I'll stick to new things I've heard today. Again, parking, parking, parking. I urge us as a city, as competent planners, to stop planning parking to meet the needs of a building development project. We're only viable at 62 units or 100 units, whatever. So therefore, we need to take up more land, pave it, and solve the problem that we ourselves have created by accepting a 62-unit building. So we're going to take another very viable lot on Jacob and Fifth that already has people parking on it and turn it into more impervious surface, more stormwater management issues, more heat island issues. Can we not look at the proposals that come ahead of us, come before us, and look at what is the highest and best use of the property? Sure. I'm all about density. I'm all about improving, you know, raising our population, having more shoppers and walkers on the street, but not to eat away the rest of the potential for this neighborhood because we need to solve this parking problem that is created by this project. We talked about green. Thank you, Sarah, for bringing that up. Thank you for other commissioners for reinforcing that. Green is not just street trees. Green is green roofs. Green is porous parking surfaces, stormwater, good stormwater management. I would not recommend, I would not want to see this extra parking lot approved as part of this project without seeing a plan for it, without seeing that the lighting is beneficial to a residential neighborhood and that the stormwater is well cared for and that the parking really is a net benefit. But but more parking lots are not necessarily community benefits. More parks, more. And even if this supposed parking lot comes to fruition, it should incorporate some, you know, green space and rain gardens and, and things that would be a benefit, a corner bench, whatever. It's important that the planning commission see that plan, just like they would any other parking lot. And so again, why does it have to be approved tonight without all of the information ahead of you? I'm kind of random here. Green. This, the concept of, you know, why, what is really objectionable here? What is really not? What about this concept is rubbing the neighbors the wrong way? It's not just more cars on the street. The marketing for insight and for this, from what we've gleaned, and I'd love to have it addressed, is for student housing. And you know, Cosmo did say, I'm here representing a sponsor. Who is that sponsor? Is it a developer manager of student marketed housing? Again. Oh, okay. Okay, that's good to know.
We're also at four minutes.
Very good to know. It is the transient nature of individually rented buildings that is really contrary to family planning. So I just want to reinforce that the fervor with which these neighbors have organized, with which they've investigated and explored, it is a, really a precious asset, and that to mistreat that asset of a neighborhood that is, that is fervently in love with their neighborhood. That's just something that we as a, as a planning commission, as good planners in City Hall, need to really honor and promote. I also mentioned, I heard some, Cosmo said that zoning does not want three and a half stories on Fifth everywhere. So are we setting a precedent here that seven stories is what we're going to see someday on Jacob and Fifth, and someday in the O'Neill Apartments parking lot, and someday across the street, and to the which point, you know, the entire neighborhood will lose its complete, completely lose its family-oriented character. And I just, I would like to see, if that's the intent, let's lay it out in the comprehensive plan or, you know, in a, in a real community design effort to say, this is, this is where we're headed, and this is what we accept. But I don't hear that. I don't see that, that comprehensive study going on. So again, thanks for a very thorough presentation, and thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
I'll try not to be too long. But I have some very important points here, and I want to introduce myself to the audience. The planning commission knows me. I am on the planning commission, have been on it now for about three years, and I was on it a few years ago also. My name is Barbara Higby. I live at 2167 Fifth Avenue. And I have watched King's, King's Landing be planned and built. I actually voted for King's Landing. I had no idea it was going to be all student housing and that it was going to have the impacts that it is going to have. We have not seen all the impacts from King's Landing yet. It had a poor rent up. You could see that because of the way the COVID hit and the way that RPI, they, on the one hand, they pushed the students out of the dorms. They de-densified the college and the hillside. But on the other hand, they rolled But on the other hand, they rolled the students through in like units of like, I don't know, six or eight weeks. So we have not seen the, the actual impacts from the, from King's Landing one. So, but what I'd like to start with is the two things I thought you were going to be discussing tonight were concept approval and seeker. And I was a little surprised to see site plan review on it. So I'd like to just say two quick things about the concept. Number one, the building is too large, the big building. It's too large. It's too tall. 82 feet is not what is done in any of the downtown residential projects. There is no such thing as 82 feet. Secondly, the two levels of parking below the building, that is also unprecedented. The, the parking lots that we have in residential buildings in downtown Troy do not have two levels below the, the, the building. I would ask if the planning commission would please go on a field trip and have Cosmo invite you to see the height of the, of the parking garage inside the building and then picture two levels of that below the, this building. It is a huge amount of, of pounding and excavating down to, I don't even know how deep it is. There's some number on there. It looked to me like it went below the flood zone. It looked like it went to 19 feet. But I, it is a very serious thing to approve a project that doesn't have the kind of soil borings and all the, the tests that have to be done to see if it could even be built. This is a very serious amount of, of pounding. And many of the brick, of the buildings in the area, including mine, are brick. Mine is 1840s. And I don't think they can really handle it. I, I just think it's going to be very destructive. Secondly, so, so the, so those concept issues of the size of the building and the size of the parking. The, the third thing under concept is the eight parking spaces. And again, I was on the planning commission. I voted for King's One and I remember that we negotiated every detail of that parking, the, the lot, how the traffic would go, that it was not only those eight spaces could come up onto Fifth. It was totally negotiated and I, as a planning commission member, thought that that project had those eight spaces and that access road. I was shocked to hear, I didn't just hear it tonight, I've heard it before, that that is not the case. I think that you are possibly opening the planning commission to action if you give now the, the actual permission to King's Landing two to just take it. I think you should talk to your lawyer about that. And I think once, once you do approve it, approve it, I think then the planning commission, I guess the city owns that problem. That, because they, those, those lots, those spaces were filled immediately and up until like June, when the whole thing collapsed. And they're assigned spaces. So the other task for tonight is seeker. Okay? And the, the first question that I have had is about parking. So it has been stated that parking is not a legitimate issue for, because we have no zoning. You know, our zoning doesn't, part of parking here. So the question was, is parking a legitimate issue in seeker review? Even when there is no parking requirement in the zoning ordinance? And the answer I have gotten from a number of people, lawyers, is seeker considers the aggregated impacts of existing neighborhood buildings and the proposed project. So it wouldn't matter who builds King's Landing one, the impact of the parking of that building with 100 and somewhere 130 to 140, that has to be counted in seeker. And the other point on that is that once you pass seeker and then you're into, into just site plan review, planning commission really doesn't have any teeth on parking, which we already knew. But you do have teeth on seeker. Okay. So the concept is terribly important and this, and seeker is. The other thing I want to mention is the, the, the building condition report paints a, paints a false picture of those buildings. It states that the buildings are not, are derelict. They are not derelict. They are occupied. The tenants are in there and have said they must be out by the end of August because the buildings are going to be demolished forthwith. That's what the tenants have said. They said it also in March that, but the, suddenly the developer didn't get his approval. So the, the fact that the, the developer is denigrating the buildings that actually are not that bad is, it's, it isn't true. So my other hope is that the city would not allow to, if you do approve this, and I hope you do not give concept approval or seeker tonight. It isn't ready. There's so many questions. But if you did, then please don't, please make it sure they can't just go ahead and quickly demolish those buildings because there are so many unknowns. And you could end up without the buildings. Those buildings are much, buildings exactly like that are being renovated down on First Street and Anthony knows about this. You've got historic tax credits. You've got it here and you've got it down there. Down there, the buildings are near Washington Park. Up here, the buildings are near downtown and the Ryan's Wake Block, very much sought after by homeowners who want to rehab. It's going on right now. So it is not correct to say that they couldn't be rehabbed. The little wooden shack at the back, they get taken off. That's the first thing. They hire a guy, take that shack off. Then the, the brick parts can be renovated. There's the, the historic tax credits. I would say to you that the Fifth Avenue corridor is the special thing, not the Federal Street corridor. This developer, everything is his flagship Federal Street. Look, not enough attention paid. And, and it's, it's too big and it's too overbearing and it is outside of the character of the neighborhood. So I would hope that, that you do not vote tonight, that you just, I'm not saying vote it down. I'm just saying, give it some time. Also, I brought the book called Architecture Worth Saving. My house is in it. It's on this block. It is, I would say that this block is worth saving. So if you could reduce the size of the building, really look carefully at the impacts of that amount of, of pounding and, and digging in the parking garage. Thank you. If you have questions, I'll answer them.
Thank you.
I'd just like to very quickly correct the record on a few points. For the record, John Lapper. The, what your attorney said, I just want to reiterate, there's, because there's some confusion with the public. Type one action does not push anything towards a pause deck and pours, towards an environmental impact statement. And I know that attorney Brick said that. It's just a presumption and that's why we've done all the studies and, and, and put all this information into the record. The issue with the Troy LDC parcel that people are talking about a building, it's a parcel of property that's vacant, that's under contract. So it's appropriate that it's part of this project because it's controlled by the applicant. It doesn't have a building in it, on it. It just, it's a vacant piece of property that will be incorporated. The city transferred title, as I understand it, to the LDC so that it could be transferred to the applicant, but not, it's not going to happen until this, this board approves it. Ms. Hammer said that there were no, this is the same exact project, there are the same number of bedrooms. And that's not true. The same number of apartments, but this has 30 fewer bedrooms than, than the prior project. It's much different because you required it to be a much different project in, in size and scale. Mr. Bama talked about, besides the LDC building, three bedroom units, and there are no three bedroom units here. In terms of King's One, there were many, many tenants in that building that are Regeneron employees, that are nurses. They're all, it's a mixed use building, which is what the comp plan calls for, or, or mixed tenant building. Lots of different, different type of people. And of course, we can't legislate who can, who can rent a building. And then finally, King's One is 100% leased. It was 80% leased for a while. It was, of course, affected, came on a little slow because of the pandemic, but it's 100% leased. So there's no more people that are going to be in there than, than are now. And then some people are saying this is too tall. And of course, the, you know, we cited in the comp plan where Troy is looking for, for density and more population downtown, on the outskirts of downtown. So again, Cosmo as an RPI grad and, and many of his partners as well are trying to invest in Troy. This is a big investment. We think that King's One was a big success. We think that Fifth Avenue needs to be redeveloped. And they're, they've, they've gone to a lot of hard work to satisfy the concerns of this board and the public. And we hope that you'll support it. Thank you.
Thank you. So I don't see any other members of the public sitting in the front row. Oh, I see one hand.
My name is Ronnie Shamam. I live at 1928 Fifth Avenue between Fulton and Grant. And I'm going to speak just for probably one minute. And anecdotally, I live at 1928 Fifth Avenue and my office is at 484 River Street on the corner of Hutton Street and River Street. And I either walk or drive on River Street, Fifth Avenue and King Street two to three times per day. And anecdotally, I can tell you, between the King's Landing One project and the Troy Waste Building, former Marvin Nightingale Building on River Street that is just being populated, I can see the increase in street parking all times of the day, but especially in the morning and especially after work. People are parking in the street, taking in their groceries, emptying out their Amazon packages. And they're there. And we're starting to see more parking on my block of 1928 Fifth. So it's coming down further south on Fifth Avenue. That's anecdotal. It's my desire to, to live in the wonderful Troy neighborhood that I returned to three years ago from New York City, to this wonderful city that everyone appreciates for his, it's historic and interesting architecture. Thank you very much and thank you for your work.
Thank you.
My name's John Ambul. I'm the owner of property at 2423 Fifth Avenue, the old Sam's, Sam's Clubhouse. I really just have two quick questions. I heard a lot about economics, but I didn't hear anything about the tax base. Is this like a, is this a pilot program? Is this going to be a taxed project of property tax?
I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know. Aaron, if you do.
It's my understanding and Cosmo, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that you, you, you will be seeking a pilot for this project.
Okay. And my other statement, just, you know, I have a building at 2423 Fifth Avenue. We renovated it and we have four one bedroom units there. We went rent to young professionals also. And the neighborhood's been great. It's worked out really well. I'll say out of our four one bedrooms, we have seven cars for that. And that's standard because it's couples that are moving in, young professionals, two people going to work every day. I don't know, I'm not any kind of traffic advisor or anything like that. But I will say that sometimes, you know, we really have to look at who's renting as opposed to, you know, what some type of system has for numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, with that, I'm going to turn to my fellow commissioners. We have a few different options at this point. The public hearing is currently open. We can close it unless we think that there's any need. Sorry about that. The public hearing is open right now, but we can close it if we don't feel that there's any need to keep it open any further to hear additional comment. But I also put it in my fellow commissioners, whether there is any further information that you need to make a decision tonight, either from the applicant or from any other source before we act.
What would we, what would we be voting on specifically?
Well, the main issue before us tonight is whether or not to make a declaration regarding seeker, one way or the other. I would say that if, if there is no further information that we need, I feel that we're in a position where we, we could make that decision tonight as far as whether or not to make a positive or a negative declaration.
Anthony, I have one question and that's for Andy. I would appreciate your interpretation or counterpoint to what I believe I heard from the Glens Falls attorney, forgive me for not recalling your name, that we, the planning commission must issue a positive declaration if buildings eligible for the National Historic Register will be affected by the project.
Sure. And, and I don't believe that was what he was saying. What the secret state is that if you are going to construct a certain number of units and you are substantially contiguous to or within a historic district or substantially contiguous to or near something that's eligible for the register, that makes you a type one action. And, and that's a correct statement. That statement does not say, and you must do, must make a positive declaration. That's the step that I, I would disagree with if that's what he was trying to say.
I apologize if I, if I understood the statement incorrectly.
I can restate that because that wasn't necessarily what I was saying. It is a type one action.
Correct. Right. So if I'm characterizing you correctly, Ben, he's making an argument. He's, he's, we all agree it's a type one, but he's making an argument that based upon the information provided to you that you should be making a positive declaration. I don't necessarily agree with that argument, but that's, that's the, that's, I'm characterizing your argument correctly, right? Yeah. If you think it's a large impact. Again.
Understood.
Making an argument, making, making an argument very well, but, but making an argument. Yes.
That is my only comment or question.
Any other commissioner comments or questions? Is there any other information that you feel like you are lacking tonight that we would need before we take an action?
Can I just say a couple of things process wise first?
Sure, of course.
First, we had the special meeting. Sarah was unable to participate. She's participated this evening. If you could just state for the record, Sarah, what you've done to familiarize yourself with the record of the special meeting?
Yes.
Because it's important since you weren't there that you familiarize yourself with that record.
Yes, I appreciate it, that reminder. I have, of course, reviewed all of the, and quite frankly, gone back far before July and re-familiarized myself with all of the submission materials associated with this proposal. So that would be June, July, and what is being presented this evening. And I have listened to all 117 minutes of audio recording from the July special meeting.
Thank you. In, in terms of process, usually what this board does is when they feel they're in a position to issue a negative declaration or, or just a determination of significance on the seeker, they also feel they're in a position to approve the project. So 99 times out of 100, when there's something before you, when you get to that point in the process, you'll do a motion for the neg deck and then you'll go right into an approval of, of the site plan or, or whatever it is before you. That is not required. The, the chairman said that he believes you're in a position to make a determination of significant under seeker this evening based upon the information provided. I, I would agree with that. I, I think that's very easily supported legally, that, that the information is there and you are in a position to make a determination. That being said, there were some design questions, comments, opinions, concerns, suggestions that were raised here this evening that may necessarily involve a further discussion related prior to site plan approval. So the idea of can you do any street trees doesn't necessarily stop you from making a secret determination. The idea of how can you, what are you going to do with those inside windows? It, it's an interior design element, not necessarily within the purview of the board, but that's a discussion you could have post-secret determination and prior to site plan. I think what I'm saying in the interest of brevity is that it sounded to me like there were some issues that the board may want to continue to have discussions with the applicant about. And, and that's perfectly permissible, but you still have the information in front of you to make a secret determination this evening, in my opinion.
And just for clarification, Andy, if, for example, And just for clarification, Andy, if, for example, we do not grant site plan approval tonight, but we do close the public hearing and a revised site plan is later submitted, we can always reopen the public hearing for additional public comment on a revised site plan.
Correct. Not only could you reopen the public hearing. In my experience with this board, you usually allow public comment, even if it's not a full blown advertised public hearing. You've always been very generous to allow public comment. And so you always have that opportunity as well. Or you could say, you know what? These revisions, let's re notice it, let's have in the public hearing, let's have another special meeting, completely do that, absolutely.
I have another question for you, Andy. Barb mentioned during her discussion that things like the parking really should be addressed before seeker determination is made because quote unquote, we have teeth during this portion of the process, whereas we don't later. Could you elaborate on that?
I think this commission always has teeth. It's a question on how they choose to show them. Parking is a consideration for seeker. What you have in the record is a parking analysis by a very reputable traffic engineering firm, the best in the business, stating that the parking will result in a positive increase in available spaces based upon that analysis. You have that in the record. You have testimony from people who live in the neighborhood that's saying, here's the real world issues with parking on this particular street. And to what Mr. Lappert referred to, you have a zoning code that doesn't require any parking whatsoever. So I think what what Barb was saying is, since it's not required by zoning, your power to really address this is in the secret process because you don't have the power to address it in site plan because it's not required by zone. I don't necessarily agree with that. I think you can still address it during site plan. But to the extent that it's a component of the secret analysis, I would agree with that. You know, parking is a component of it, and the applicant has provided the parking study.
And then one other point of clarification I need from you. If there were substantial changes, such as removal of the proposed parking lot separate from the structure, or if another level of parking was something that the board would like to see as as part of the project, would those constitute significant enough changes? Or is there such a thing as a significant enough change that the secret process has to be restarted? Or is now no longer valid, the determination?
The answer is yes. I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, your question is based upon a presumption that a negative declaration would be granted. And then, which would conclude the secret process.
In this hypothetical.
And then if some, hypothetical. And then if some change to the project, either required by the planning board, offered by the applicant, you know, negotiated with the neighbors, whatever, there's a change to the project. Ken, how does that impact secret now that it's closed? And the simple answer is the regulations give you the ability to do two things. You, at any time prior to final approval of a project, you can rescind a negative declaration based upon a substantial change, newly acquired information, or changes to the project side of the project environment. So you absolutely have that ability. You also have the ability to amend a negative declaration based upon those same factors. So if there's subsequent changes, substantial changes, and or new information is discovered, you can go back and incorporate that into and amend an existing negative declaration, or you can rescind it outright and say, we got to review, we now need to review this completely differently. So you do have that ability, no question.
Thank you.
Did that answer the question?
Absolutely. And I just wanted the rest of the board as well to hear that.
I see a hand for that. We haven't closed the public hearing, although you did speak already. But sure, why don't you go onto the microphone?
I would just like to say that I was surprised when I saw the, you know, the agenda today to this evening, that it didn't have concept review. So if, so we are, and when I was thinking of concept review, I thought of it as this sort of the limits. You know, these are the outlines. It has to be within those limits and it needs to be discussed. And it has not really been discussed. The 82 feet and the amount of parking below and all the those impacts and everything else. Secondly, there is a property, there is a building on the LDC parcel, and it will have to be demolished in order for this project to be built. Oh, there is not. Where is that building? Where's that, the place where the building is? What parcel is that under? The little triangular building, the brown, where your office is? Okay. Sorry, I didn't understand it. Okay. But in any event, they're just too much open now. The other thing is, it may be leased. I don't know if it's leased, but the people aren't there. So we are not seeing the impacts of Kings Landing One. We've never seen it. The church is not in session. They were going to open August 15th. They are not in session. There are huge, and secret is the only way to go get those cumulative compounded impacts in there. So I do hope if you take action, I would hope you just table it for tonight because it's not ready. But if you do take action, I would hope you would do a POS deck because there are significant things.
Thank you. And I will say, I was not trying to squelch any any interest in the commissioners and getting additional information. I think we've had a lot of public comment and a lot of information. I personally think we're probably in a position to close the public hearing tonight because we've had a special session devoted to public comment. And unless there is new information, I don't know if there's an additional need for more public comment at this time. So I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I will make a motion to close public comment.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Going to a vote Suzanne Spellen?
Yes.
Sarah Wangert?
Yes.
Roddy Jagan?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So the public hearing is closed. So we do have a number of different options. We could make a vote, one way or the other. If one of the commissioners makes a motion with respect to a determination on seeker, either for a negative or a positive declaration. We could also table this to another session. But again, my suggestion would be that if we are going to do that, it would only be for the purposes of getting additional information that we don't have tonight, since we have gotten a lot. So I understand that there are benefits to waiting, but I would only postpone if it's for a purpose and if the purpose is to get information that we don't have available to us this evening. And if there is information out there that there are doubts in anyone's mind, I certainly encourage you to bring them up now.
I'm ready to make a motion that we issue a negative declaration for seeker.
Do you have a second?
I can't second.
Oh, there's no second. I don't think the motion goes forward. Do we have any alternative motion?
Yeah. Anyone can second the motion. It's not a vote on the motion, but it puts the motion ahead so the discussion on the merits of it can take place. So you're not binding yourself to voting one way or the other by seconding it. You're only opening it up for board discussion.
On that case, I'll second.
Do you want to discuss it before I move to a vote?
I do.
Okay.
So I think the options before us are either retain additional services to review the seeker as it stands, issue a negative or positive declaration, or seek additional info. So I mean, what we need to do here is amongst us, identify, is there something specific that any, any one of us needs to see before, before we're ready to make a, you know, a vote? I would say, you know, to kick that off, the only things that I can imagine requesting would be some compiled package from the neighborhood that, you know, states their position succinctly for us to review, or perhaps a clarifying statement from SHPO, or a formal review from, of a seeker from some agency that we were to retain.
So what would that formal review teach us?
The formal review would would point out opportunities for us to steer the, the, the development of the site in, in a way that perhaps safeguards, safeguards the project from having issues such as, such as a different leasing structure or a different shift of how the parking happens, just controls the opportunity to stipulate as part of declaration what the controls over, over it could be. And maybe I'm misspeaking, but entertain anyone, Andy, maybe.
You have the ability to seek independent third party review of an application. I would think that that ability would include retaining an outside firm to provide assistance to you and consultation on the adequacy, sufficiency, and merits of the record with an eye towards making a secret determination. You do have that ability. You also have the ability to ask city staff to perform that. And I believe the city staff has made recommendations on this in the past. And lastly, I had provided to you on Monday in our attorney client privilege discussion, my opinions on that, on that subject. Nothing I have heard here this evening has changed any of the opinions that I had provided to you on Monday related to the determination of significance under seeker.
A statement we received during discussions about this suggested that on prior projects, for example, RPI's M-PAC, that there was extensive challenge put to, to the project and that they were required to, to go through certain proofs during the secret process. And I'm not sure how this compares to, to that. Maybe somebody that has been here on the, on the commission longer can speak to that.
I was not on the commission for the M-PAC review and but I do work with the staff in the building department that performed the, the review for the building. And M-PAC is a is a, was a very unique project. And city staff, at least in the building department, did not have some of the expertise necessary to perform the review on those building plans. They had techniques that had not been seen before, unique materials and structures. And it was a you know, with all due respect, an entirely different building than a 62 unit housing development.
Yeah.
Which the planning commission has reviewed at least five of in the last five years. So.
My firm has a consultant to the city. Architecture Plus provided a comprehensive code review of the M-PAC project as a consultant to the city of Troy.
So what sorts of things as part of that review, if any, do you think should be leveraged here?
That was all building related, not seeker related. And in this case, in this case, the seeker review was performed by Andy and myself during the first iteration of this project. And with the second iteration, we performed the same analysis, went through the type one, or I'm sorry, the long environmental assessment form line by line, looked for the documentation provided by the applicant, made sure that it matched what was responded to on the form. And again, the, the information that you have in front of you is prepared by, you know, some of the, the best experts in the field.
Andy, speaking of the review of the prior submission on this in it, in its first iteration versus now, and the fact that a positive declaration was made at that point, is there any kind of risk, legal risk that to the board from comparison to that, based on the reasoning for, for the previous action?
The at the March meeting, the prior application was POS decked. There were a number of questions on the part two of the assessment form that were answered as the possibility for a moderate to large impact. And that, that triggered the positive declaration. The, that application was withdrawn. This is a new application. Granted, it's on the same property. It, certain aspects look similar, but it can be treated as a new application. Candidly, what I suspect that the applicant did is got a copy of that part two, looked at all of the potentially large impacts that were identified, and redesigned their project to address the concerns and the large potential impacts that were identified. And if you look at the list of what were the large impacts identified and the redesigned project, I think it's readily apparent that they redesigned it to seek to diminish the concern that the board had that those concerns would be moderate to large impacts. So you have the ability to view this project as a standalone. But in reality, the prior project did have a POS deck. So the ultimate question for you, I would think, is of the items listed as potentially large impacts in March, would you still consider them potentially large impacts based upon this project? And, and the changes that were made and the differences in this project compared to the prior project? And whether or not you would still, as a board, identify those concerns you had previously identified as potentially large? That, that would ultimately, I think, be your analysis. And does that answer your question?
It does. Are there three separate actions that we need to take? Seeker, concept, and site? Or is it only seeker and site approval? The concept part is what keeps getting brought up.
So concept, concept is, is a historically, what the planning commission has used concept approval for is for a project, for the first glance at a project in order to let the developer or the applicant know that they're on the right track, right? Or at least to get, you know, a bunch of ideas upfront, out of the way, just to rework the project. It's not part of the approval process. Concept votes are non binding. So even if concept approval is given, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that if they move along with that, that project, that it could be POS decked or, or disapproved. Or it's, it's right. It's, it's just a way to get the project out there, get the public's eyes on the project, get some public comment, and just get a feel for where, where things are headed.
And from this board's perspective, I would agree that there are, there are two approvals. Well, there are two actions necessary, a secret determination and then an action upon the site plan application. There may be other agency determinations that, that are required by the applicant. But, you know, such as he's going to seek a pilot, whether or not he needs IDA approval, not relevant to what you have to do here. It's basically two actions, determine significance and, you know, act upon the, the site plan application. That, and they don't have to take place at the same time, as I had stated earlier. Usually that's the way the board works, but that's not required.
And that actually brings up another good point is that, you know, if the applicant were to seek a pilot, and without getting into too many of the details, because I myself am not familiar with the process. But it's my understanding that that, that process can look at things that this board cannot. So a pilot could be contingent on the type of rental, the rental structure, the lease structure. It could be contingent on things like that, whereas your, your approvals cannot. If that makes, if that makes sense.
It does.
I would urge my fellow commissioners that if, if a negative declaration were to be issued, that we do not immediately grant any site plan approval. That's just me persuading you.
Did any other commissioners have any further discussion?
Not on seeker, no.
Okay. Yeah. So we're going to move to a vote then. Suzanne Spellen?
I'm sorry, can we state the?
The motion on the table is a motion for a negative declaration on seeker. Sarah Wangert?
Yes.
Roddy Jagan?
The motion is for a negative declaration. Yes.
And Anthony Moen, I vote no. But the motion is two, two, which means it does not carry.
Correct. That a two, two of a five member board, even though somebody's recused, you still need a a two-two of a five-member board, even though somebody's recused, you still need three votes for anything to affirmatively pass. So that would constitute non-action. You you could then entertain a opposite motion, but it's likely going to be two-two, so I think that might just be a waste of time this evening, so.
So then this is an effect table, so is there any guidance being provided to the applicant?
I offer no guidance. I would also suggest that a comprehensive, and you used a term that I hadn't heard before, Roddy, but some sort of consolidated list of commentary from the public. I I I don't see that as necessary. I have read through comments, I have taken notes, I have read staff reports. I Commissioner Wenger sees no need for that, but that doesn't mean that you don't.
Yeah, just to clarify my position earlier on that, I guess what I'm saying is we have an applicant here who has an opportunity during these meetings to present, you know, a lengthy discussion of of the, you know, the reasons, the the why they're for doing what they're trying to do. And then often, when when public speaks, you only have small chunks of time, so it's less organized, less, you know, concise and consolidated. So I was just looking for an equality between between the two presentations.
I tend to agree with Commissioner Wenger, but I feel like I've read and heard a lot of the public comment from the community, and I understand, I think, what their concerns are. So I don't know that that would be helpful to me specifically. That's not to say that it wouldn't help somebody. But I did hear some comment by members of the public saying that they felt like there was not a dialogue, so to the extent that that feeling is shared, maybe they would find it beneficial to reach out to the developer to try to instigate that dialogue separately from these hearings. But that's, again, you know, just based on a comment that I heard, and that's purely up to the the members of the public who spoke tonight.
Andy, is there a time limit in effect for this meeting? No. For a decision on for, so no decision's been made, but there's a time limit in effect at some point.
Seeker regs say that you have to make a determination of significance within 20 days of when you determine that, you know, have all the application necessary to make that.
Has that determination just been made by?
Yeah, I think I think everyone decided, what I heard, that the information's here.
So now, so now they have 20 days to to make a vote.
Right. And and candidly, for the for the public, a- as well as the board, I don't know the ramifications of a lead agency being unable to get it accumulate enough votes to determine significance. I don't, obviously, I'm going to be doing that research, but I don't know the ramifications of that. Right now, we're in a situation where there was a motion to issue a negative declaration, which failed from from lack of a majority vote. That's where we are. That 20-day window would have started today. There are, there is nothing in the regs of of, you know, penalties or default approvals if you don't meet that 20-day guideline. But it would, I think, a- at the very least, trigger a statute of limitations where 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 an applicant could bring an action to compel you to to make a decision. Again, I I'm being very, you know, not something I've seen before in 26 years. So I I'm going to need to hit the books a little bit to figure out what the options are.
So if another motion were needed to be carried or brought for for either positive or negative declaration, I'm not even sure if you can bring another motion on the same thing that just.
Oh, sure, absolutely, absolutely. And and just in the interest of time, I suggested so don't bother with a POSD Act motion, because it's going to be two-two.
So if that motion needed to be brought within 20 days, would that have to be done through a special meeting?
Well, the what happens within 20 days is you have to determine significance. Not you have to have two two votes that fail to determine significance. So again, it's it's not something addressed specifically by the regs. You you're under no obligation to do an alternative motion tonight, just to have it fail. It's you're not enough, you're not under an obligation to do that.
I would like to see, is this on? I'd like to see more from SHIPO. That would help me a lot.
Do you have my my email from SHIPO?
Yes.
From earlier this month?
Yes.
Where they said they're not going to provide comment?
I need it.
I I I've reached out to them, numerous phone calls and emails to try to get more input on this. All they have sent are the two letters received on their on their letterhead. I believe one was dated in October of 2020, another one, I think, it may be in March, maybe in January, January 25th, 2021, perhaps. The October letter says this will have an adverse impact. The January letter removes that language from the letter because an adverse impact is a phrase SHIPO uses when they've made a determination, when they've done a review and they've actually determined something. They took that language out because they hadn't reviewed anything, right? And then followed by my email relating to this application of, hey, we sent you your lead agency notification, we want to hear back from you guys. And they said the project's similar enough, our comments we sent out in October, we're not, you don't, we will not review this, we we don't issue an approval for this.
But then after that, they sent a letter to Steve saying?
No, no, the last letter I, what you, the last correspondence we have from SHIPO is that's it, we're not involved. So if you say you want more from SHIPO, my only concern is I can't get you any more from SHIPO.
What if I can get it?
Then get it.
All right.
You know.
So in light of that, then I think it's best that we table this application. Would it be okay if we table to next month's meeting, is that, or?
Okay. I I just want to say for the for the record, it what what what, just to what Andy said about we we took a look at the previous project and we changed the design, but we not only changed the design, but we also provided additional studies, traffic, view corridor studies. These are additional studies that we provided with the with the change in design to address the potential impacts on 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 SECRE.
Thank you. So you have a motion to table to next month's meeting?
I moved that we tabled to next one.
And you know the date of that meeting, Aaron?
September 15th.
September 15th? We have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Moving to a vote, Suzanne Spellin?
Yes.
Sarah Wenger?
Yes.
Roddy Yagan?
Yes.
Anthony Moen, yes. So the application is tabled to September 15th.
And and the guidance is we're not providing anything else. We're just going to come and redo the presentation.
One of our commissioners is going to be reaching out to SHIPO for additional information. We're hopeful that we'll have it by that time. If you have additional information that you want to submit, you are certainly welcome to. But other than that information, we're not.
Anthony, I don't I don't think that the expectation is next next month, you redo the presentation.
It's part of the record. The presentation this evening, the presentation, special meeting, that's part of the record, you don't need to redo that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
May I, may I ask, because we because we're not, I I suppose the motion to table could have been premature because I would like to offer some suggestions, at least, to push us on the perhaps the further development of the site plan. And if it's okay, I'll just rattle them off.
I think so.
Okay?
Yeah.
And that is that that the applicant consider significant introduction of street trees wherever those trees would be viable and where infrastructure would not be compromised. That the planning commission would like the opportunity to be involved and coordinate in the improvements of the Jacob Street lot. And that and that there is a condition, and this is very loose, but there's a condition that we be presented with, and I'm comfortable with this post post-approval with some renderings that depict what that illuminated corner of the building would be. It's those three things that I would offer.
Okay. I I would say that you should look at the civil engineering drawings. As Nick pointed out during the presentation, they are street trees on the civil engineering drawings.
I understand and I appreciate it, but because of the loss of the mature trees, I'm just asking for you to go above.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we do have two more agenda items to get through, so let's.
Okay. I'll I'll give it to the chair.
We'll make it part of the record, thank you. Okay, thank you. All right. Moving on to new business, we've got PLPC 2021 33 494 River Street. Is the applicant here?
Yep.
Okay, great. Sorry for making you wait, but.
Be- before they get started, as I've stated publicly in the past, when First Columbia comes in, I represent a subsidiary of theirs, an LLC, for a project in the town of Wilmington, Essex County. We did their HOA plan. I have nothing to do with any of this stuff, I don't believe it's a conflict of interest, but I do want to disclose it for the record.
Thank you, Andy, we appreciate it. You may begin.
Good evening, commissioners, I'm Nathaniel Betty, I'm a project manager for First Columbia, it's my uncle Chris Betty, he's another project manager for our firm. The first project we have before you tonight is 494 River Street, which I've been before this commission back in November for a demolition permit. This is the new construction iteration of that parcel. It's a self-storage facility to extend the adjacent facility at 500 River Street, which is currently under renovations. The five-story climate-controlled storage building built on the the parcel at 494. The commissioners have had some time to review the supply documents. It's a pretty straightforward proposal, we're just extending the storage business from the adjacent property of 500 to the south. It's an infill development piece there. The commissioners have comments or questions on our proposal?
Of course.
Okay, okay, so my comments are associated with the facade development, of course. And what I think is actually kind of interesting and fun is this presentation, and I I've jumped ahead and looked at the next proposal as well. So this introduction of corrugated metal siding, which I think can look really, you know, industrial, but kind of sophisticated, too. And I think the precedent with Capitol Roots is like, I don't know if they were your precedent, but I think it's an interesting introduction in contrast to all of the brick in the neighborhood. I really like it. I don't love storage buildings at all. You know, they're really low on on my space use preference, but I understand there's a need and recognize that. In summary, I think that just a little more a little more detail in your elevations would be really appreciated because the way that you've blocked out the adjacent, the beautiful adjacent building, just like there's no relationship at all. And I know, yes, it's just storage building, but for me, driving down the street when there's beauty, you know, on the west side of the street, I I want to feel more assured that I'm going to see it on the east side, too. And so you know, that's not fancy windows, but it's some sort of, some sort of detailing and in energy coming from that facade.
So so there is an element of that, and we can get into that some more, but to program the space, it's not all storage, we wanted to put in some office space on the front end on the first floor, as you kind of abut the sidewalk along River Street. So that can help break up that kind of monotonous nature, I think, that you're getting at.
Yep.
I appreciate your comments on the corrugated metal looking good, I think that, like Capitol Roots, definitely can have that effect. And to the point of blocking the historic building to the north, I think it's what you're talking about, the Carriage House of 500 River Street, which is kind of set back off of the streetway. If you remember, the prior building on that site was the German Lutheran Church that kind of had the same effect. It was not all the way out to River Street, but almost
Yes.
got that far. We kind of looked at it and said, it's almost doing the same thing with our building. We're pushing out further to maximize the amount of space we can fit on the building and the, I think, city zoning and comp plan wants buildings to come out to the sidewalk, not have so much setback space and kind of have odd facade positioning between them. Kind of, we're stuck with that on the Carriage House piece because that's just where it was. There were buildings in front of that historically, we will look back and found some pictures of, there was a brownstone that sat in front of 498, which is the north neighbor, Carriage House of 500. But we're actually using that on the 500 parcel as some some parking and loading space, so we weren't going to build out in front of that.
Are you planning to restore the cornice on the brewery building?
Yes.
Great.
We have to rebuild the backing for it first, it was in rough shape.
Is there any connection between this project and any of the residential development around it?
No real connection, other than we're trying to satisfy the need of the residential density that's been added over the last 10 years to Troy. Not many of the residences have been built with in-unit storage or in-building storage. And we kind of looked at it and said, when Mark Young, the prior operator, was running it, there was a good customer base that he served, we're trying to do the same thing and add to it because there is a a larger demand now than there was even five years ago for people to use self-storage in our neighborhood, and there's really no other good spot to put it. We always looked at it trying to find another site for him to go to when we bought the building years ago, and Mark could never find one, we looked at it and said, it's it's a good use, let's keep it. It helps, I was listening to the other applicants that was on before us, and parking is a big problem. Nice thing about storage, it doesn't have a big parking appetite, we only need so many spaces for a facility of this size. And this is just in addition to the the main facility to the north. So it fits as a puzzle piece to our master plan nicely if you put that use in.
Is it being proposed as temperature-controlled?
Yes.
Yeah. So no, I'm trying to think position-wise where this sits relative to any of the residential buildings. It's like right up here. So there's no physical connection is? Okay, sorry, no question related to that?
There's no residential on that block.
Is it?
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I'll I'll just state again, I, when I look at the site plan, it looks like something is protruding out from the center of the proposed building. But then when I look at the west elevation, I don't see that. Right, so see this little box here?
On the north side?
Am I looking at, am I looking at the church under?
Yes, yes.
Never mind.
That's actually one of the staff comments, that the existing conditions should reflect existing conditions.
That the church is going.
Correct.
Sort of take this back to like a 30,000-foot view. Sort of take this back to like a 30,000-foot view and to bring it back to the discussion of conceptual review is, is, is a storage building, something that we want to see in, in that use, as a use of that space?
It's not allowed use, so.
It's not allowed use, so.
We don't, Troy's zoning code is not.
Troy's zoning code doesn't specifically have a use for self-storage. So, you know, when, when a use is presented that is not explicitly called for in our code, we do our best to classify it as a, another use that's similar. And in this case, most similar use we have is warehouse, which, you know, it, it's a most laypeople would say those are similar uses. But that's, it's a, you guys are in the HWD, Husick Waterfront District, I think, and it's an allowed, warehousing isn't allowed use. In fact, that is the adjacent use to this site now.
To my knowledge, there is no other self-storage facility within the city limits, you'd have to cross the river to go.
Well, there's self-storage up on Campbell Avenue, I'm not sure of another one, that's your traditional self-storage type thing.
Close to downtown, this is.
There actually is a need for self-storage. All these millennials coming and downsizers, there's quite a need. I understand your point though about this spot, but I don't think we have any.
Yeah, don't, please don't take my, my question as an indication that I'm for or against.
I, I personally share Commissioner Wangert's opinions about storage in general, but again, you know, it isn't allowed use and that, there is a need. So this is an unlisted action and that'll mean we will need to make a secret determination, though I don't know that needs to happen tonight since I think that there's additional information that we're going to need from the applicant.
Sarah, you know, one thing that does stick out to me is, is the facade and how that'll fit with, with the area. So it's something I'd really like you to take a, a strong position on at some point and that's just
Yeah, and I
request.
And conceptually, not the concept, not the site plan concept, but conceptually, I'm kind of excited about the facade because I, I just, I think it's an interesting material contrast. Even though the elevations look expansive, it's a pretty small footprint.
Fifty-foot wide lot.
And the extensive facades are sort of inboard or immediately adjacent to another building. So that's an opportunity to look kind of cool for a storage building, so. I am comfortable with it, but look forward to seeing more further developed.
Is, is the
Yes.
Is the metal paneling shown, an insulated metal panel, do, are you that far along in planning it?
We're not into that level of architecturals yet, but if it's climate-controlled, we'll need some insulation.
Yeah, I just don't know if it'd be the same system.
That's the only way to do it, don't you think? I mean, with your, your continuous insulation requirement.
Right.
So any other Commissioners have any other comments or questions, anything that might help the applicant prepare for further submissions?
I don't have any, except to say that they are, it is needed.
Barb knows, I, thank you. And I would simply say, conceptually, it's fine, but obviously we want to see, what is the, you know, beyond asphalt and spot elevations, we'd like to see what the parking area is going to look like.
If, I would also like to see the surrounding buildings, you know, similar in like a, the adjacent building, what the elevation looks like
I agree.
in the same elevation.
I agree, within reason.
Yes. Exactly, you don't, it's, I'm not suggesting go out and do a detailed survey of that, that neighboring buildings and exactly.
That's fine, yeah.
Do you have any other questions for the, the board or at this time? And if you have everything you need and you can always follow up with staff or any, with any questions between now and next meeting, I would suggest that we just table this to the September meeting.
Just one issue.
Of course.
One of the comments was the rear setback and the placement of the building. We set the new building on the exact same footing foundation as the old church. And that was art.
Yeah.
We were reusing that purposely because it's holding up the alley anyway, but it's also set back from the building adjacent. Our, what we call the carriage house, the building directly north is, is butts the, the alley right away, so we're, we're set back 15 feet. Um, it was the 20-foot setback, so I guess we just need direction on what we need to do as far as trying to reuse that existing foundation slash where we are with the setback. Get a 15-foot high, or 15 and a half foot setback here.
Yep. Yeah.
So the, the building's at a skew to the road behind, so that's why one side beats the other side.
You, you start within the 20, it looks like, and then it
Right.
angles over. Yeah.
Not square to the road.
Yep.
So if you're going down the alley, the building you're referring to as the carriage house, is that the one that's at the end of the alley?
No, that's the, the former bottle storage building of the brewery that's self-storage now, that's the
You're going down the alley and then there's, you're doing all the construction right now.
Very close to the road is the
That's the
Yes.
What we call the carriage.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there a foundation section available, the existing foundation?
Yeah, yeah, that's where it's at.
Application, but I, I do apologize, I didn't print it tonight, hard copy, I wasn't sure if it would be needed. I, we could project it perhaps as an option, or I could run and print out a, a copy.
So the alley is 20 feet higher than River Street. So that, that foundation is actually, maybe moving back the alley.
Yeah, I mean, I I, I do, I don't, I don't have an issue with the with the setback being 15 and a half feet, it's just it needs a variance. Given the, the, the drawing I'm looking at, you're not reusing that foundation, you're showing a new foundation in that corner. If you are reusing the foundation, survey the foundation, show me you're reusing it and be done. That's a, right, if it's an existing foundation, you wouldn't need the variance.
Okay.
I, I don't see the harm in getting it, I mean, I don't, I don't see it being a, you know, it's a pretty reasonable variance, but, but if you don't want to go to the ZBA, then yeah, then we, you'd, we'd have to see, because, because right now what I'm seeing is that the edge of the, you're going beyond, you're, you're doing a new foundation wall there. You might save part of the existing wall, but to build the rectangle that's shown on here, it looks like you would be doing a new wall.
Aaron, oh, sorry. No, finish. Okay.
So we'll need to make an application for the
But again, the variance would be a small, that, that's a small lift, in my opinion, but if you don't want to do that, then.
We either do one or the other, we'll either affirm that we're sitting on the existing foundation, which I think that is our intent. But if not, we'll still
Yeah.
And does the Engineers' Office have any concern with the capacity of an old foundation to support however many stories of what is going to be classified basically in code as warehouse or heavy storage?
I, I would if I was stamping it, yeah. But I'm not, so
Okay.
that's the applicant's responsibility.
Fair enough.
Any other questions for us?
Dash, I just, I sent you earlier today a revised EAF that answered a few questions that were
Yes, that was included in these hard copy packets today, and then that will be kept for digital. That's okay, thank you.
I have one thought that just popped into mind, storage that'll be at ground level would essentially be in the flood, flood region, wouldn't it not?
No.
You're on that side of the street, it makes so much of a difference.
Okay, it's actually, it's, it's not even, yeah, it's not even that side, yeah, the flood zone doesn't go that far.
As you get further south, when the plane crosses over to the park line across from this north, it's a safe
Okay, if there's no further questions or comments, I suggest we move to table this to the September 15th meeting.
I make a motion that we table the application until our next meeting, September 15th.
I'll second the motion.
Moving to a vote, are right, be.
Yes.
Suzanne Spillan?
Yes.
Sarah Wangert?
Yes.
Bobby Egan?
Yes.
Anthony Moen, yes. The application is tabled to September 15th. Okay. Next application. 2021 34, the bargain block. I think you'll be presenting the same.
We are, we are. So this is an extension of our master plan for the waterfront district, this is, we ran these two or three. We're losing track, it's been a long time.
Try, could you just try to speak a little bit closer?
Sure.
Might pull that up.
So this is a extension of our master plan development for this neighborhood of Troy that we've been invested in for the last 15 years or so. Centered around the Flanagan Building, just to the north of Route 7 Bridge. So it involves a grocery store, a fitness facility, and a senior housing project, all within a intersection of each other at the crossing of Vanderheiden Street and River Street. It's a grocery store, we think is, is really important, we live right now in a food desert. According to the USDA's definition, is a region within a census tract that has either 500 or more families or 30% or more of the population that live below the poverty line. And it's also a vehicular disadvantaged area where more than 100 households lack a vehicle to travel to a grocery store that's within half a mile or further away, so it's a use that I think City has been asking for in its comp plan. A great operator that wants to come to Troy, serve this neighborhood, but also the whole city and really make an impact in our neighborhood. It's the repurposedment of the former Smith Beauty Building at 558 River Street, the 20,000-square-foot former warehouse. 1910's vintage from our estimation. It was also built by the same company that built Flanagan Building, Miller Hall and Hartwell. It was another collar company back in Troy's manufacturing heyday. It'll be a historic tax credit project, we're in the process of doing our nominations right now with Chipo. They've been engaged on this project and we've been getting advice from them on how to design it, how to site our additions, so we have a loading dock addition on the north side as well as a entrance airlock to put the shopping carts and have patrons enter and exit. Via historic rehab of the shell and then an infill of the grocery use, you can see it there on the screen, the, the one across River Street on the east side. Flip across the street to the south lot of 547 is the proposed fitness facility. It's from the out-of-state operator wants to come and be our tenant there. It is a 18,000-square-foot addition of space to the existing Flanagan Building, which will tie in at the rear side facing the river there. We're also using a good portion of the Flanagan Building's basement to house more of their program, so it kind of integrates the historic building and the new building. Working with Chipo on that for the, in National Parks for the addition, I guess, criteria that they want to see us do the skin out of is kind of one of our questions that we're trying to work on with them. Because it is in addition to the historic building. And then finally, to the north of Vanderheiden Street from that is our senior housing project. Figured residential on the water is a good place to put that in a scale of building like that, should go next to the the river in similar scale height with its neighboring building at 547. 123 units proposed right now. All using shared parking, kind of look at what we have here at the Healy Building and the hotel next door is the model. All of the use is kind of share parking at different hours, so it works. We own or lease 1,300 spots in our neighborhood of Troy, so from how we've calculated things, it all pencils out from a parking utilization standpoint, I heard from the last presentation, and that's a very hot topic. But we think this is a great project for the city. It's a neighborhood that really needs some attention and it's, it's time for us to make a leap north of Husick Street and put some more investment there. We have a lot of outside of the area groups, either as tenants or investors that want to be a part of it, which is very exciting. And I think it's going to do a, a really nice job of continuing to transform that main entrance, not, not the main entrance, but one of them, as you come across the, the Route 7 Bridge and, and see Troy to really improve it and kind of bring it into this next century that we're in.
Couple of things, I'd like to just note on this project, I think, I think we're mistaken on the agenda, it says unlisted action, I think this is a type-one action.
I was going to ask about that.
Given that Flanagan is listed, correct?
Flanagan is not currently listed, Flanagan
But it's eligible.
is eligible, as is 558.
Uh, all right, and then, um, again, it's not that it's eligible, it's the 123 units. It would have to be 200 units, but because it would have to be, normally it's 200 units as a type-one, but because of the eligible aspect, you lower that to 25% of the threshold, that's 50 units is, is the threshold. I, I've, I've in my, my head here, um, the, the other item that wasn't clear in what was presented, but I don't think it's an issue, I can't stress it enough, I don't think it's an issue. Um, I just think that the board needs the documentation for it. Unlike the previous proposal, parking is required here. This is not in a B4 zone like King's Landing 2, and so we do have parking requirements. They have three separate uses, they have a grocery store, they have residential, and they have a gym. We don't have the gym use exactly defined, so that's a little tricky, but I think they did a good job of classifying it and providing the parking. What I don't think was provided was that master plan for parking. So they do absolutely control 1,000-plus parking spaces in this area. But obviously, some of those are currently earmarked for other uses. Also, and again, I don't think it's a problem, but the parking that's shown, two of the parking lots that are being considered for this developer, one of them's located here under the, where am I? Under the Coller City Bridge, right here. Okay, it, it, end of Husick Street.
Yep.
Keep driving Husick till you can't go any further, what you're looking at in front of you is a 997-ish space parking lot. It's actually controlled by DOT. Um, First Columbia owns four different lots that are controlled by DOT, there's this one
Well, we leased them there, we leased them.
Five?
No, we leased those lots, DOT owns them.
Correct, no, I'm sorry, yes, yes, um.
I wouldn't presume to own property of the state of New York.
Correct, yes. They have a right to be there. Um, it's, it's, it's a use and occupancy permit, and the permit is only for parking currently. Um, DOT reserves the right to revoke that permit with 30 days written notice. They've also recently done a lot of work on the bridge, which ate up all of that space. This is very similar, I guess.
For staging or
For staging, yeah.
Temporary.
Temporarily, correct, correct. So my only point here is I don't think the board, I think they need to consider that the parking is available most of the time. I, I think it would be, it'd be a stretch to think that DOT for any reason is going to, you know, remove that parking. Politically, that, that would probably cause some, some issues, but I also don't think that it can be considered part of the proposal because it isn't under their control, much like the parking for King's Landing that the LDC owns is not considered part of that proposal, right? Difference there, they don't need it, here they do. Um, I'll also say that I would absolutely support a parking variance because currently they are proposing to provide two spaces per unit for, I believe, what's being built.
Senior housing.
And that's just excessive. You do not need two spaces per unit, whether it's student housing or senior housing or what have you, two, two spaces a unit is, is just, it's too much. We don't need that much parking. So I do think in this case, they'd have to seek a variance for those reasons. But I think for those same reasons, they have a good case for it. So I, you know, whether the planning commission wants to recommend that based on further review or what have you, that's, those are the two issues that I, I saw from this. There's another issue for, with the grocery store when it comes to the loading, but I'll, I'll get to that when we dive into the individual site plans.
So just, I'm curious, can I ask you a question about your legal analysis? If it was a ninety-nine year lease, would your opinion be different?
It'd have to be because we do that all the time. We do land leases all the time like that in development.
Right. And I agree. I, I think the concern is that thirty day window is really, in my mind, temporary rental. You, you have control over it and yours, but you could be out in thirty days. So the fact, if there's thirty day limitation or notice provision in, in the use and occupancy permit, then yeah, I don't think we can count. I would agree.
But what is the likelihood of that being?
No, and that's what I said, though. I completely agree, and I don't think.
We can see it. They just finished doing the rehab a couple of months ago. Harrison and Burrows packed up and they've demoed from my knowledge.
The, the alternative way to approach it, though, if you don't go get the variance for it now, which I think you have a very strong case to obtain the variance, it's, it's more of a process step. The alternative would be any approval of the site plans would be conditioned upon immediately shutting them down and vacating if you lose access to that, those parking areas.
But Andy, would that be all or one?
The variance. It would be, maybe this is one application. Get the variance.
Yeah, yeah. We have no control over it, but we could recommend it and.
Again, on further, I, I think with through further analysis, the planning commission could issue a recommendation. I think it's based on perhaps some type of parking study or something like that. Again, correct, because I, I mean, you must have, you own, these are not the only three properties that use the parking that you're, you're showing, right? I mean, that lot up on Sixth Avenue.
It's our overflow lot and it's the DSS lot for the county, which we shuttle people back and forth to up and down.
Right. So there's a background usage to that lot. So, you know, you couldn't claim all of the spaces are vacant, but you could claim certainly some of them are, right? And they could. Again, I don't think there's a parking issue with this particular applicant, given how much parking they, they have access to through the city. It's just documented.
I agree completely and make it really easy to read.
Yeah.
I mean.
Color code. Yeah.
No, seriously, with big numbers on each lot and, and, and maybe even number required for the building adjacent to it. Really had like, like we're bored, treat us like a board. We just need the big picture because that half of the room can do the nitpicking.
That, I'm done with my nitpicking.
So I, I, I probably don't need to ask this question at all, but the city sees no, has no reservations with this being a, a proposal, a single proposal in front of the planning commission.
No, I will say that I did put some thought into whether or not, if I was the applicant's position, I want to multiple be one proposal. The, the, the logic being, could a portion of this not be considered a type one? Because they're really not related, right? I mean, you could make the argument that the Flanagan Square Edition, along with the housing, because they share a parking field, should be one project, but certainly I think the, the grocery store is a separate, could be considered a separate project. And I don't know if the grocery store would be considered a type one on its own. So I, you know, but, but again, I don't know that that really changes.
Can I speak to that point of why we're doing it as one? So they're all kind of feeding off each other from a feasibility standpoint. If we did the grocery store just as a one-off, it wouldn't have the same impact as if we incorporated with senior housing and with the gym and the other uses that are already part of this neighborhood. But doing them all at once, it's important to have them support each other from not just off-hours parking use where they share things and everyone's happy. It's, they make a bigger impact on improving the neighborhood if you can do them all at once. And we're trying to bring in investment to help us go get this done. They're gonna want the assurance that they're all approved together so that they're not just buying into, oh, it's only one piece of this that I can go do. So that's really why we're putting it all in as, as one piece.
And I would make a statement that I support all of it. And I just, my only reservation is if one piece of it holds up the show for the whole shebang. That's your choice. But speaking for myself, I, I support it. It's super exciting.
No, thank you. Appreciate that.
I mean, if you wanna, if you wanna, I'll go into the access thing I had on, on the, on the grocery store. But again, that's just kind of, that's rather quick.
Yeah, for our benefit. How does the scale of the groceries? Can, can you elaborate on how big of a grocery store?
Twenty thousand square foot total building. So
And that's the bottom structure, too.
It's existing structure. Bottom floor is the actual grocery space. Upper floor is a combo of storage and a cafe. And it's also how we load because it's up on the grade of Rock Alley.
Is bargain grocery a, is that the operator's name?
That's the tenant that's coming in.
So I'm not sure actually what you guys have in front of you in your packet, because there was a, an updated site plan that was sent over. Because we're getting, we're in the concept stage here, so things move a little bit faster, right? Okay, so you guys have a later version of it. This was the original version. I'll note, I'll note the issue that we had with it and then the correction. Well, an alternate concept that you guys have in front of you. So this is currently, I think you guys refer to it as Rock Alley, but I believe. North, right. Okay. Um, oh, thanks. So this is North First Street. The, the, the original proposal was to have a loading dock right here. And obviously, that spans the alley. The concern that the city had with it, aside from it's our property, is that fire access, it would limit, the alley's used for fire access.
Aaron, do you mind zooming in?
We're asking a lot, Sarah. All right. So in, in lieu of having the loading dock here, a new concept, which you guys have in front of you, has the loading dock here at a little bit of an angle. Okay, the trucks would pull up Vanderheiden, they would, they would back up to that dock, do their, their business and then, and then leave. I have an issue with that concept as well, which is it would block the alley during the loading. Now, I understand alleys are for loading and unloading. Typically, that's done with a vehicle that's parallel in the alley to allow for another vehicle to pass, even though it's tight. I know. It's, it's just blocking the alley that, that I have an issue with. So I I don't need to have a solution. But, but one of the thoughts I had was to, was to relocate that loading perhaps to this side of the building so that vehicles could pull down the alley and then back in. There's some grade challenges with that, no doubt, but it prevents, it prevents obstructing the alley. I suppose some other site plan modifications could accomplish the same thing, but that was, it's my only technical comment on, on the entire proposal. So.
So there's a rationale to that, too, Aaron, is we're doing this as a tax act project and Chipo's pretty sensitive about the southern and western facades of this building being primary. It's kind of the opposite of what Flanagan has across the street where the north and the west, the east facades are primary facades.
You're saying they care more about this facade?
Since that was not a facade that had a building up against it historically, and the north side was, which you can tell from how the parging was done.
Okay.
On that side for most of it, we favored doing additions on that end. And it's the same reasoning for the airlock where the carts are and where you enter the actual first floor, closer to River Street, that we decided to put the additions on that end. It would have been nicer to put the first floor entrance on the south side because people park right there and you just walk right in. But to comply with the Secretary of the Interior standards from the Park Service, which Chipo is the first layer of going through that rule set. That's why we decided to, to put it on that corner and the loading dock to kind of go towards that same end.
Well, it's something I'll have to review with Fire Services just to see if, if I can get their buy-in on it. I'm still hesitant. Right, a single unit might be a different, completely different thing.
Again, just to reiterate, on the north side of that building was in the past a former building. So if you drive by that today, you'll just see a parched wall, which is just basically protecting the, the old interior brick. So in our experience and we run through with Chipo is, they don't like the parched wall. And they don't want you to impact what they think is the more valuable wall, which was the south elevation. Obviously, the mercury elevation.
Well, that, that'll have to, I, I didn't know that, and that'll have to be taken into consideration, obviously.
So I did look at your thought when you said that and, you know, this is the grade on that parking lot and the ability to get a level spot for a tractor trailer. I think we would be, you know, adversely impacting.
Yeah, right there, Steve, at the southeast corner.
Circulate for the customers. You know, two things. We don't like to mix the loading and the customers in the same spot. But we also don't want to make it so they can't circulate. I think we'd end up with a retaining wall parallel to the alley that, that just to help make sure that the truck is leveled at the top. Which I think is, you know, obviously not what we'd like to do the same that parking lots. It's rare to have like parking lots. Two reasons, the historic issue and the grading issues made more sense for us to go on the both sides. Like I said, I think we should get a better read of what. We do know that they, they do need a truck height dock. Building has a truck height dock where that loading dock is shown, but obviously you can't back up to it.
Right.
It's right on the alley. So we do need to do something so you can load truck height. Truck height trucks. Let us try to figure out from the operator what is typical. Maybe it's on the two larger trucks.
Andy, I have a question for you.
Okay.
As this project is within Chipo's jurisdiction and they have historic tax credits and things like that, typically that process isn't going to be complete by the time the planning commission needs to be complete with their process.
Right.
So normally to issue a negative declaration when you're subject to Chipo, you get a letter of no effect from Chipo.
Right.
Would we, would, would the board instead then be able to, would there be another correspondence from Chipo that could be expected, given the nature of the historic tax? Obviously, if they're going for the tax credits, you know, it's outside the purview of this board, right?
Right.
They'll, they'll, they'll obviously satisfy everything Chipo needs because they're gonna get the tax credit.
And, and the tax credits are an approval from Chipo. So that, that makes them an involved agency because now it's a state authority.
Right.
But, and I'll look into it a little more, but I, I don't think the tax credit issue holds up the secret process because Chipo's involved as an involved agency in the secret process. But absent comments from them or requests from them as an involved agency to hold off until we review the tax credit application.
Which I don't know what they would, no.
Um, I think they would treat them differently. They, they would do the environmental review component as an involved agency for seeker. I don't think they would hold up that part of it because there's also an application for tax.
Excellent. So the board will have most likely correspondence from Chipo that will allow them to proceed.
That would be my expectation, yeah.
Chipo's process.
Right, and which is why I didn't think, and I've never seen it held up another.
And I think it's a chicken and an egg. I think their process requires a land use approval from the city.
Right.
So they can't, on the tax credit side, it would hold up the, the approval.
I'm, I'm, I'm really looking for some, I mean, even if you think about a project that requires all the way through a phase three artifact recovery, you're not done that process until you have site plan approval and you're in, you're into it, right?
So. Andy, the other thing.
Approval is a letter from Chipo that says we've accepted. You've, you've moved this far in the process and everything looks good.
Right.
We'll see you, we'll see you, you know, when, when you're.
We've identified no potential impacts. I, I think if you're applying for the credits, they would be supportive.
Well, right. Yeah, yeah.
But Andy, applying for the credit is an elective layer. Say that I, I discovered through dealing with Chipo that it's not a congruent process with what we're trying to do for the building. I don't have to pursue tax credits if it's going to.
I, I don't think it will. I'll look into it, but I don't think it's gonna slow this board down at all.
No, no, I just wanted to make sure that there would be something from Chipo earlier in the process that, that is essentially their sign off.
I, I would think so. And based upon best experience, it may change throughout the process, but who knows?
I mean, I'd you know, them writing a letter saying they like what you're doing. We're gonna be meeting with them and repeatedly meeting at the site.
It would be a letter that, that's accepted. Either you go through the phase one A and one B and they, they, they issue a letter of no effect, right? They would either do that or they'd issue a letter. I mean, if you're going for tax credits, I'm assuming there's, there's something in between.
Well, their process is part one to establish it can be on the register, which we're in the process of doing. And then there's a part two, which gets into the details of the rehab, comparing what the existing condition is and what I propose to do to it. That's a long process.
Right.
I'm waiting on several things from Park Service, which is the other agency that has to sign off at the end. That's the ultimate sign off of the entire process that they're out sixty days at least for getting projects pushed through their system.
You may want the credits and not get them.
Yeah, it's not about the credits. It's about Chipo's sign off.
Yeah. I, I, I think they bifurcate the process.
They must, yeah, they must.
To wait for the. The typical window for rehab projects are two years for construction to actually go put the work in after you've gotten your initial approval, but you can elect to be a five-year phased rehab if you have that requirement and need that amount of time. Here, I don't think the construction will take that long, but the approvals are all backed up.
You're not disturbing over an acre with all that? No, not, well, it's, it's one project. That's another reason, you know, but it's one project. You're, are you, you're disturbing over an acre, right? You need a SWIP. Because you're not discharging to combine there because we haven't separated there, right? Yeah. So if you need a SWIP, then you have to go through Chipo to get the SWIP. So whatever, whatever Chipo can give you, and whether you need the SWIP or not, whatever Chipo would normally have to issue if you needed it, that's what, that's what the planning commission will need. At least to stay as consistent as they have been. Commissioners have anything else?
Do we have to declare ourselves lead agency?
Uh, I would, I, yeah, I would. Yeah. Actually, well, hang on, hang on a second. Well, hang on, you tabled the first one.
You tabled the first one.
But you didn't declare yourself lead agency on the first one. I don't know. That's a lawyer question.
Considering the merits of the application is tabled, you still have the ability to declare lead agency on the one-year table.
Okay.
I, I would recommend it both now because it gets, gives the staff the ability to get the letters out and start the process.
So we have motions regarding these two applications. Twenty twenty-one, thirty-three, thirty-four.
I move that we be declared lead agency on both of these first one project.
I second that motion.
All right, going to a vote. Barbara Higby? Suzanne Spelling?
Yes.
Sarah Winger?
Yes.
Bobby Yeagan?
Yes.
Anthony Moan, yes. So, I think mission, I have self-lead agency for both of these two applications.
All right.
And then.
So that starts, so that starts the clock. From the day we noticed them, right? So it's not gonna be today, it'll be tomorrow.
So letters will go out to Chipo.
So that, that notification won't be back for the next meeting, but that, that's okay. You can still, you, you can still hear this application at the next meeting. Okay.
All right. Do you have any further questions for us for tonight? Any other information that you need?
Yeah, I think we're good. Appreciate your time.
Okay. So if everyone's comfortable, we can, we can table.
Table the second one.
Table the second one.
I make a motion that we table this application.
I'll second it.
All right. And to be clear, we're tabling to the September 15th meeting, not to a state uncertain.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay. Going to a vote. Barbara Higby?
Yes.
Suzanne Spelling?
Yes.
Sarah Winger?
Yes.
Bobby Yeagan?
Yes.
Anthony Moan, yes. So the application is tabled to September 15th. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, everyone.